That was one.
He can't.
You can, can I?
He can't. Especially if it's hard to read on the television. He can't step in, so. At least he should be here for a little.
On the screen, it says on the screen, it's on broadcast, not on PC. What does that mean to you?
Start.
They'll start when you will be being. They're not going to have to do the broadcast later. Okay, okay, so I'm turning this over. Okay, perfect, okay, thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente for Wednesday, August 20th. And why don't we get started, the Pledge of Allegiance? Dr. McCacken, can you lead us?
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like everyone is present except our chairman. So y'all are stuck with me until he gets here. And he does plan on coming this evening, so hopefully he'll get here sooner than later. In the meantime, it looks like we probably need to settle in here because we have a couple of public hearings and we have some new business. But in the meantime, has everyone reviewed the minutes? There's actually two meetings. Oh, no, there's one meeting, there's the study session and the regular meeting. Let's start with the study session. Any comments on the meeting minutes? Okay.
I move, go ahead. Move approval of the minutes from the study session.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. So we're in favor except for one abstention, Dr. McCacken. Okay, so the regular Planning Commission meeting, you guys review that?
Yeah, I move approval of the minutes of the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, that also is approved. Okay, this is time in the evening when we open for oral communication from the public on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any? Anybody who wants to speak? Going, going, gone, okay. Let's move on to consent calendar. We don't have any consent calendar items this evening. Given the fact that we have two rather large projects, both with a public hearing, we thought we'd start with the new business to get those done. So if I can get a motion to switch the order and put the new business projects A and B ahead of the public hearings?
Make that motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, let's move that. So why don't we start with new business item A, modification of red curb at 2470 South Olavista. And we have a presentation. Zach? Okay, gentlemen, turn it over to you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Zach Ponton, I'm your Assistant City Engineer. Tonight with me I have Ryan Kim, our Senior Civil Traffic Engineer. We have two different agenda items for you tonight. I don't know if we can open up, the presentation is just going to be the slide that was in the agenda that shows the proposed red curb. We're starting off with a request that came to us from the resident at 2470 South El Comino Real. We outlined a little bit of the detail in the staff report. In general, this is a pretty unique situation. Typically, we don't do a lot of red curbs, especially for just a private drive approach. In this particular case, the street is a local collector street. The speed on it is close to 30 miles an hour on average, although it's marked for 25. The curve itself of the street is over a 90-degree curve. And just the way the house was built, it's very hard for them to get out of that driveway. They don't have a lot of backup distance, so they're already curving to get into their garage at 90 degrees and then pulling out. They're having a hard time seeing the bike lane when the cars are parked there. And this is a very popular route for bikes through the town. So this is part of our, I didn't mention it in the staff report, but it is part of our statewide bike route through the city, is actually on the street. So it does see a lot of surfers going to trestles and the local beaches. In addition, it is a local collector, so it has a lot of residential traffic on it, too. Being in the coastal zone, we thought it was important not to lose any parking areas. We try to save as many as possible. There is a kind of an abandoned bus stop on one side of the house. So in effect, what we're doing is flipping the red curb from one side of the drive approach to the other. We're leaving the neighboring house, we'll end up still having some parking in front of it in addition to one stall that would be still in front of this other house. So in theory, there could have been four stalls to the west of this drive approach that could have been red curbed. We're recommending only doing three of them right now. I think it'll greatly increase the line of sight for this person getting out of the driveway. There are no reported accidents of this, but at the same time, this is a fairly unique situation. Like I said, we don't typically go after driveways. In a curvy hillside community, we can end up with red curb almost everywhere. So with that, this will be recommended, staff's recommendation is to take this to City Council where all red curb does get codified. And so we're looking for a Planning Commission recommendation to find it sequoia exempt and then also a recommendation for approval to go forward to City Council for approval. With that, staff's available for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Camp, I'm so sorry, I forgot to prompt you for any disclosures or conflicts from the commission.
Thanks for that. Do we have any disclosures on this item?
No.
Brett?
I went today to visit the site, but I didn't talk to anybody.
Okay. Anyone else?
I also went today to visit it just about 20 minutes ago during the rush hour.
Okay.
But I do have a question.
Yes.
On the existing curb, are there the parking spaces there, how many are there? The existing red curb?
The existing red curb, there should be four.
When you move it, then there would be four spaces?
So we're being able to, right now, we're being able to fit in four. And we're taking away three to the left of the driveway and creating four to the right. So we'll actually be gaining one for the area.
Gaining a space?
Yep.
Okay, with that, that helps a great deal, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. So do we know on the existing red curb, obviously in your judgment it's not going to be necessary anymore, do we know why it was there to begin with?
I'm sorry, it was there for a bus stop. And there's no longer a bus route along Olavista.
Okay.
There is a lift sign out there, but technically lift cars shouldn't be parking and waiting for people. They're just there to pick people up. So whether they pick them up in this new red curb area or even near those parking stalls, I'm not too worried about not having to. I wanted to keep the lift sign where it's at. Just if it comes an issue, I may move it over to where this red curb is. But I don't need authority to do that, moving the lift sign, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
So my question is, how long has this been without the red curb? The entire time, the new proposed red curb?
It's a good question. This house was built, I believe, I don't know if the resident is here. This house was recently constructed in the last 10 or 15 years. There, I'm trying to think of the house layout before it. Ideally, this area has been built since mostly the 60s and 50s, 50s and 60s around this area. Most of those houses came in. So this particular house, though, was built about 10 years ago.
Okay. So when I did go out and do the site visit, I took a bunch of pictures just so I would have reference. I think it's definitely beneficial for the community to get rid of the red markings that were proposing. But I'm not really in favor of adding more red markings when there were no red markings to begin with. And looking at the obstruction, there's a couple bushes in their yard that kind of creates their issue. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Why don't we just stick to questions right now? Then when we have our discussion, we can get into that. Any other questions for staff?
I have one more. The bike lane, so the house 10 years, when was the bike lane put in?
Oh, good question. I think that bike lane's probably been there a good 10 or 15 years.
15 years, okay.
It definitely was not there like 20 years ago, I don't think. I've been here my whole life, I don't remember it there more than 15 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Was this a complaint? This come in as a complaint or was this proactive?
A request from that property owner. And just, I think, I don't know if they complained over multiple times or not. And ultimately, once we go out there and look at it, so it only became from this property owner itself. It wasn't from the neighborhood or anything like that. So this is where this is a somewhat unique thing. Because we often do get requests for everybody, you know, everybody wants three feet on each side of their driveway red curbed. And we just, we can't do that on every house in the city. This in particular seemed a little different just due to the characteristics of the street, the bike lane and the speed and the curve, really.
Okay, so based on a request from one resident, obviously they're a concerned one because it's at their property, this, you kind of went into motion on this thing, okay? The red curb that was there previously, I guess, was sightline studies or evaluation? You determined that that one was not necessary to make it a safer condition, but that this new location is?
The previous red curb was for the bus stop, but adding the parking stalls in that area shouldn't pose a line of sight issue, mostly because when you're pulling out of your driveway, you're looking at the closest vehicle to you. And that'll be that, what I'll call here, eastbound traffic. So that's the one that's the immediate threat when you're pulling out is the first traffic direction. So if this person were to be heading out, you know, headfirst out of this drive approach, they'll be looking to the left immediately, mostly to get out. And to be perfectly honest, most turns going in and out of this house are likely going to the freeway or El Comino Real, so the most turns are actually going right. So they're not even crossing that westbound traffic unless they're going to the beach, probably, or a friend's house.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay. So what we're going to do now is open it up for public comment. I have one card here on this item. And so you have three minutes to make a presentation. If you could come up to the mic, it is Marie Dennison?
She's on the next one.
Oh, she's on the next one. Sorry about that, wrong red curb. Hang on, hang on, we'll get you up here for the next one. All right, well, why don't we go on into discussion on this item? Since we don't have any public comments, can we start with you?
Sure. So as far as some of the letters that we have received about losing parking, it looks like they actually gained one space by flipping it. So it looks like it's more of a safety issue for one resident. I was out there and there's plenty of parking on the street. And I was just there, like I said, about 20 minutes ago, and it was very, very busy. Now that I see it from this direction, I'm understanding why the request is to flip it. That bike lane was extremely busy with people going, with their serfs on their bikes, going to the beach. And then you also had the golf carts, and it is a very busy area. I'm not opposed to flipping this because it doesn't lose any parking, you actually gain parking. So I just like to hear more about what the other commissioners think about this.
If I could add one thing to, staff did not receive any letters in opposition to this one.
To this one.
The next one, definitely.
Got it, got it, okay.
Well, my initial concern is always precedent, but because we're exchanging, that's assuaged that concern. The people also could probably come out face-first, you know, onto the street to look rather than back up. I mean, that's what I would tell everybody in my family. What's, the area that was the bus is part of a green belt area. At least I can tell by looking at the geography, so that doesn't concern me. What's at 2490, is that a multifamily? Because this is by Calafia, right? Right before it turns and ends and you have that little triangular, whatever it's called, that always confuses everybody which part to turn into. What is that at 2490? Looks like an apartment or a multi?
That is the condoplex, individually owned condos. I don't know how many units are in there, but it's got to be at least 30 to potentially 40 units in there.
Okay. Well, I'm favorable to it because I don't think it sets a precedent because we're exchanging it with an already red zone. Because my initial concern was what would keep any other resident? So we would make findings that it's a switch. It's a trade of an already red zone for another red zone. Those are my comments.
Okay. Let's go to the other end. Commissioner Freeman, do you have any comments? Well, you already had some, but why don't you?
I got it myself. You know where I stand on this. They've been there for 10 years, no accidents reported by the city. I don't see by doing this, it's going to do anything but open Pandora's box. Every resident that comes in here wants a red curb, then, you know, where does it end? I'm in favor of getting rid of the red curb on the right, but on the left side, I don't think we need it at this time. That's my opinion.
Patrick?
I'll be supporting it. I think that the addition of a space is a good reason to approach future potential red curb requests and say, you know, this one is unique. We added a parking space and we increased safety, so I'm in support of it.
I'm supportive of the item as staff has presented it. Yeah, there's clearly unique conditions here that warrant it, so I'm pleased to support the item.
It sounds like, you know, I'm hearing there's primarily support here. There's no opposition, there's no public opposition, this was noticed.
Yeah, 300 feet, yeah.
So we would have heard, I think, if there was some opposition. You know, Zach noted that it is a unique situation. So, I mean, that whole South Olavista is unique in our city. So, you know, that, I think, needs to be sort of considered. I do think it's a little odd that it would come up with only one resident making a complaint or request, but I don't see any negatives here for me. I mean, I tend to agree with the other commissioners.
I will agree with Commissioner Freeman that there is a lot of hedging. And if that could be mitigated, I think they would gain some safety vision exiting that driveway. It is blocking the view from the driveway. And that's on both sides.
Okay. So to move this one along, can we potentially get a motion somewhere?
Yeah, I move I move that we approve this item forwarding on with the recommendation to council approve it as written by staff, including the sequel finding that it's no significant impact.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. So Commissioner Freeman is opposed, all others in favor, so the motion passes. Congratulations to that resident. Who may or may not be here. Let's go on to the next one.
Again, good evening, I'm Zach Ponton, your Assistant City Engineer, and Ryan Kim, our Traffic Engineer, with us. We have in front of you another red curb proposal, this one being at the intersection of Caie de Soto and Caie Nina. Caie Nina is a pretty small cul-de-sac of about seven residents, or not about, seven residents on that cul-de-sac. We got a complaint that when large trucks are parking near that intersection, they're having a difficult time pulling out. And so, staff analyzed the situation here. This one's, you know, a little less unique than some of the, the previous one, I'll, I'll admit that. And so this one is, what can we do about improving, you know, the line of sight in this area? The Caie Nina is on the outside of a curb, not on the inside, so technically, it already does have a little bit better line of sight than the previous application we just talked about. The streets are both local residential streets, they're not, nobody's classified a collector or anything else. The complaints from some of the people are, there is a lot of cut-through traffic, though, from Salvador. They don't drive all the way down to Presidio, and to get down on, towards the freeway. And so the people that live on the upper section of Salvador, it sounds like, do a lot of cut-through onto this De Soto street. There are no reported accidents here. We have received six emails in opposition to this, mostly due to the loss of parking. And so staff is, is favorable, still going forward with it, but given the, the, the public opposition to it, we, we're pretty neutral on this one. I mean, it, ultimately, you're not allowed to park on the curve anyway, so of that 70 feet, there's really only about 35 of it that can theory, in theory, be a parked area. And so if there's any compromise that we would want to do, that 35 feet is really a car and a half. If there, if you wanted to narrow it down to just 20 feet, if there was a compromise, if, if, if Planning Commission was looking for something like that, staff would be, if you're going to keep any red curb there, then like that 20-foot would, would allow one less parking, one less vehicle out there. But the complaint did come in due to the, the large size of the vehicles that park out there, and that some of the comments from the neighborhood in opposition to this also commented about a number of commercial cars that are parking in the area. And most of those complaints raised the issue of the loss of parking, and all it is, is going to move cars to likely in front of their houses, or in front of their driveways. So staff does kind of agree some, with some of those complaints, though, that if the, with the moving of those vehicles onto the other side of the street, similar to that last application we just went over, that they're on the inside of that turn. These people do have some pretty tough driveways that, that are, are complaining. And they're not asking for red curb, because they know that's needed for parking. And so this, this request is a little, not as unique as the one before, but the, the resident on Caie Nina just has a hard time getting out of there. And based on, we do have some centerline striping out there, so a lot of times with that narrow centerline striping, that's how, that's why we judge that red line, the red parking, to go and match up with that centerline. Because when you have a centerline parking on a street this narrow, it is pretty narrow, if a car is parked there, you end up potentially going over that centerline. So that's why we were in favor of this, but you do have, you know, several people in opposition to it also. So staff's, you know, I'm not going to say we're neutral on it, we, we do have a narrow bottleneck with that centerline of that stripe that was added a, a few years ago. Ryan, I don't know if we know when that centerline was added, but it was not there, but when you're on a curve in an intersection like this, you like to have 50 feet of centerline to guide people on what side of the street to be at, on an intersection. So the traffic engineers before us started adding these centerlines to the street. And once that happened, and also, and a big trucks parked there, that resulting driveline is pretty narrow. I don't know if we know that distance right now off the top of our head, but that was one of the main reasons why we were in favor of adding this red curb. The hill's pretty steep, it obviously has the curve, people from Nina just aren't seeing the people until they come down the hill, and they're right there. And so that's why we got the complaints for this one. With that, staff's here for questions, and, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that.
Vice Chair, can we do disclosures here again?
I'm sorry? Oh, disclosure.
Sorry about that.
Any disclosures?
Yeah, I, I went out there today and also took pictures and, and surveyed the area, talked to no one.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
I was also out there, I did not see Commissioner Freeman, and I also took pictures. I spoke to no one, and I have a question when you get through the disclosures.
Okay. Any others? Nobody else driving around taking pictures? Okay. Any questions for staff?
I have.
Let's start with Commissioner Prescott.
I have a question. When I went out there, I noticed there was parking on both sides of the street, on De Soto, right across from where that red curb is, and I was not able to actually stay in the lane, I had to go towards the middle because of the parking. Is parking allowed on both sides of the street?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and further up, there is, there's no houses, there's kind of a green belt, I don't know what you would call it, a slope, but there's no houses on that side. Is parking allowed, just be past that white car that you have in your rendition? Can you park all the way up?
I believe there's a fire hydrant, so there's some limitations a little bit further up, but past the fire hydrant, you should be able to park.
So there was, there was, when I, when I was out there, there was plenty of parking all the way up that side of the street. Maybe not as convenient as parking here, but there was plenty of parking on, on both sides of the street. That, that area, however, was extremely narrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the report, did you see it's legal to park on the corner?
On a radius like that, so where the, on the exhibit up there, you see the, right below Caie Nina, you see a car parked, that, that technically is the farthest ahead, you probably want somebody to park. Anything past a stop sign on a radius, you can't park.
Because I, I've heard on the radius, you cannot park there, it's ADA.
You're not, there's no sidewalk, but even without a sidewalk, you still can't park there.
Because I've been told you can park on the, on the radius. By certain police departments, when I've complained before about it, so I don't know if, we might want to check that out.
I mean, right now-
If it's not ADA constructed, and it's just a regular curb-
So right now, with the daylighting law, technically, you can't park on, on any of this.
Did you have another question? Okay. Anybody else, questions for staff? Down on the end?
I'll make it a question this time.
Good job.
So according to California law, AB 413, which went into effect January 1st, it states that parking is prohibited within 20 feet of intersection across the state, including San Clemente. That being said, do we really need a red line or a red curb in that area? And if so, how many more feet would we go beyond that curb?
So that, that 20-foot of the daylighting is usually done from where a crossing point would be. There aren't no sidewalks out there to mark it, but with that being said, the, where the curved radius is on the outside, we call it beginning curve, end curve, from that point, we usually measure that 20-foot. So that's kind of why I mentioned that compromise there of that 20 feet, due to the daylighting law, that's come into effect now.
Okay, thank you.
Technically, it's not, it doesn't have to be marked to be enforceable.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Okay. So even if that wasn't marked red, there'd still be a distance of 35 feet, is that what you're saying, or?
Right now, that red line from that radius is probably 35 feet of parking area that people are probably parking in. The daylighting law that Mr. Freeman brought up is 20 feet of that is already state law right now, where it's not supposed to be a parking. And so that's every intersection in almost every city right now in the state.
So the tangent, let's say the tangent line, or you say the start of curve, it's 20 feet from there around the curb?
If there were a crosswalk here, we would probably measure it from the truncated dome, because, but without one here, that's where the, the law doesn't get into that much detail. So it's a little bit of a frustrating law right now, because that 20 feet, it doesn't say from where. Because it's for pedestrians, not so much a line of sight for cars, but for line of sight for pedestrians, without there being a ramp there, and I don't think we will get one there, just because of the lack of right-of-way. It's hard to, like, the law doesn't get into where to start that 20 feet. So I, I bring it up as where the beginning of that curve ends, and that, that compound, where the radius, where the ramp would be, and that, there's about 35 feet of red curb being on this exhibit. But by the daylighting law, I would probably see that as 20 feet. And so if it wanted to be shrunken to meet the daylighting law, we would shrink that 35 feet down to 20, if, if you wanted to meet a compromise of meeting the daylight law.
Okay. So are we seeing, you know, trucks or whatever parked on the curb, or are we seeing them on the straightaway, once you get to Caie de Soto?
It, it sounds like, and you can kind of see it in this aerial image, the, the people are parking pretty close to that intersection right now.
Okay. But, but they're not on the curve, so I guess the fact that you said you're sort of neutral, or you're not, you know, I don't know how you describe that, and you're not allowed to park on that curve anyway, which I think deals with that narrow street problem. If you took 20 feet off of that, or if you took, let's say, 50 feet off of that 70 instead of 35, then you wouldn't really even need a red curb, right? I mean, if it's already illegal to park on the curb, what's the point?
Yeah, so the, the exhibit we did shows 70. In, in theory, you, we could have not even shown the red curb around that radius. It could have just started at the beginning of curb that I'm talking about, is really only about 35 feet of effective red curb out there. So in, in hindsight on it, especially with this discussion, I don't know if we would red-curb the actual radius, where the trunk, where the ramp would go, we would actually red-curb where that, where the white truck is kind of showing on the photo, and starting from there going north. And so that distance is the 35 that I'm talking about.
Okay, so if you did that, then does that really affect the sightlines? Because that's really what we're talking about here. Because you've already made, at, at that point, you've already made that turn, right? I mean, you're looking, the way the road curves to the left, I mean, obviously, you're looking for people coming up, I assume, which you can see. I'm just not really seeing the benefit here. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing something, but anyway, we can, we can discuss, we can discuss that. Any other questions for staff? Okay, we're going to open it up for, excuse me, public comment, and I only have one blue card for this one, and that's Marie, or Marie, Mary Dennison. So if you could come up to the mic, please. Yes. And just state your name, if you would, and you're limited to three minutes.
My name's Marie Dennison, and I am very familiar with this street, as I live at 502. So I see cars come, they don't come fast, there's that turn, and many times when I'm parked at my house, and I go straight up, and I make, I turn onto Nina, there's full vision from past 50, 501, 509, you can see cars coming down. So I don't understand how a person can't see them with vehicles parked there, because you're not looking at that, you're looking up the street, because they're making the turn. I've never had an issue. We've lived there for 40 years, there's never been an accident there, that I know of, and I'm home a lot, and I, I do a lot of yard work in the front, which is, if you went by my house, I'm sorry. Things are dying, but I try. But I don't see a need for this red curb at all. The red curbing would, would disturb the people coming down and parking on the curb of De Soto, the lower part, and then they're coming to make the turn off Presidio, which they come at a faster speed. When they come onto De Soto, their speed is slowed down, because it's total residential. There's been no more houses built in that area, this is, the houses there have been there for 60 years, there's been remodels, but no new houses, so development hasn't increased traffic at all. It's just a normal, slow side street, where a lot of traffic isn't, doesn't impede it. But with that said, people like to park in front of their house. Those people are parking in front of their house, whether it's in front on their door side, or in front across the street. And if you do that red curb, they're going to be parking up the hill in front of somebody else's house. And I just think that there's no need for this, with the factor that one person is, has a small issue wish, with it, and I have not, I've talked to other neighbors, and no one else has an issue with it, I've talked to neighbors on Nina, they have no issue with it. So I, I, I strongly encourage you to not red-curb this area. And one comment, I'm sorry, how many letters did you say you received?
Six.
Six, okay. I count seven, for sure, that I know of, and in fact, I had sent an email on Friday. And then my, sorry, my son- Can I finish? No. Because my email didn't get through, and I called Jane, and she said, I didn't get it. And I said, I sent it on Friday, I can show you the confirmation. And then, and I only knew this because my son said he got a confirmation, and I checked my email, I said, I didn't get a confirmation. And so I thought, why did I not? And so I was on the phone with Jane Monday morning, and she said, resend it to me right now. So you probably got my Monday email and not my Friday.
Well, now that we've got that cleared up. Okay, thanks for your comment. And I think we only received letters in opposition to this, right? Okay. So there were six or seven? Okay. Thank you. And I don't have any other blue cards, so I think that's everyone that's speaking on this. So let's close the public part of it and have our discussion. Let me start over with Mr. Freeman this time.
Thank you, sir. So when I, when I went there and I looked at the, the site, just so I would better understand what we're dealing with, I'm, I'm in complete agreement with the citizens. I don't know that we need a 30-foot red curb that's out in the middle of the road arbitrarily. I drove through that area, I can't tell you how many fire hydrants I saw that didn't have red curbs. So if we want to use red paint, that's probably where we should start. That's my comment.
Thank you. Patrick, you have any comments?
Thank you. I am not going to be supporting this recommendation, and I would like to suggest that staff reach out to the sheriff's office, have them do some enforcement in this area, just as time permits, and see if people are parking less than 20 feet away from the radius, so we can start educating everybody in the organization and, and our citizens about the law that passed in January. Thank you.
I, I agree to not support this item. I agree with the comments that have already been made.
Any other thoughts?
My comments would be, I would compromise by putting the red line, because I've lived on a corner before, and I know how close, if it's not, I mean, that people do not know that you can't park, whatever this new law is, so close that they will park there, if it's, if it's unmarked. And since there has been a complaint, which puts a little bit of an onus on us, if we just did the radius, it really wouldn't eliminate that one car spot, which may be the reason why the, we got the complaint in the first place. So what's the big deal of just making the red curb to where that one white car is parked, and, no big deal? and, no big deal? Somebody mentioned that it was a safety hazard, because we do have on record, somebody made the request for this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and if somebody gets hurt, we have a little bit of a liability. I, what's the big deal of just painting that corner red, when they can enforce the other side, because it's not, there's a lot of places to park here. I agree, you know, in totality, but just taking a little bit more of a, maybe an agreeable or, not compromises is the woodwork, the good word, but what's the big deal of painting the radius, so that nobody does get that close and create a dangerous situation, which somebody has noticed us that it does create? That would be my, instead of just saying no.
Okay, well, we're, Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're making a recommendation to city council to either approve the red, or we're recommending the red curb be painted or not, right?
Yeah, planning commission could certainly come up with an alternate recommendation, if there's something in between or off of the primary alternatives, yeah.
Okay. So we're just making a recommendation to the council?
Correct.
Okay.
Clarification on that, i-if we, if the majority does not want this curb at all, do we make any recommendation to council, or does it just stop here at the commission?
I'm actually going to defer that question to Zach, as to the public works procedure on their, on advancing with a negative recommendation.
Good question. Kind of in uncharted territories, most of the time, it's pretty much approved or slightly modified. I would almost picture this, I'm looking back and forth at our attorney and Jonathan, is if this were a hearing that was a final decision, it could be called up by council, it could be appealed to council. So my, my current thought is, there's not a code that says that every complaint has to go to council, and we tell people that all the time. We don't have to bring it to planning commission, we don't have to bring it to council every time there's a single complaint. So my, my recommendation would be, if, if the body votes to not do anything, um, we would simply just deny that recommendation at this time, and council could read the minutes, and if they so choose, they can call it up, or ask that it be brought forward to them at a, at a future meeting.
Okay, thanks. So, given our discussion here, do I have any?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm more concerned with the, the parking on both sides of the street with De Soto. I don't live there, and you all seem to get along with that, because it is very, it makes it very narrow. I, I'm less concerned with the parking on the curb and the, making it red. So, I mean, I would be in favor of a compromise, if that's the direction we take, or I would be in favor of no red line.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear a specific motion. You're not really, so you're not making a motion?
I'm not making a motion, I'm just, uh...
Do I have a motion?
Yeah. I, I just want to comment that I don't like the idea of compromise, painting red on the curb radius, because that's in the vehicle code that you can't park, that would be painted red on every single curb return in the city, which is a gigantic maintenance issue. So, I'm against the compromise, and I'll be making a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we deny this request, and that we do not recommend to council the addition of this red curb.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. That's what we like to see. That, I guess, I can't say it passes, unanimously, unanimously does not pass.
It's an interesting new state law. A lot of cities are juggling what to do with it, because like Commissioner McCann said, you could be, every intersection, and red curbing everything, so. So this one's, this one's subject to the police enforcement of weather discretion, and so ultimately, I think a lot of cities are taking a little bit of a wait-and-see approach to see what, what really happens with this, because there is some ambiguity in the law. It doesn't say where it begins, it doesn't say, you know, it's a little, little frustrating as an engineer. I want definite stuff in my laws, right? And not just the subject 20 feet, 20 feet from where, so.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to head back to our public hearing portion of our meeting, and let's start with, uh, public hearing A, which is the Hanson Hotel at 1801 North El Camino Real. And I'm sure that all of my fellow commissioners read the traffic study, and, okay, I think it's 120 pages, I hope, I hope you guys all read that, because we specifically requested that traffic study be in the packet, so thanks for doing that, John. And, John, why don't you go ahead and give us your presentation?
Vice Chair Camp. So let's do disclosures first. Sorry about the previous ones, and then we'll start the public hearing.
You can see I'm not the normal chairman here. Any disclosures?
I, I visited the site today, took some pictures, and I talked to no one.
Okay. Any others?
I visited the site, I'm familiar with the site.
Yeah, I visited the site daily.
I do as well. Back and forth, I know exactly where it is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, John, I think we're ready for you now.
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners. John Champ, I'm the project planner for the Hanson Hotel, uh, which is requesting a development permit, as well as a conditionally used permit. Just to give a little context about the property, uh, it is located on a vacant lot. It's approximately 32,000 square feet within the mixed-use one, or MU1 zoning district. It's located within several overlays, including the central business district, architectural overlay, as well as the coastal zone. This property is also identified in the general plan, as well as the city's coastal land use plan, as a gateway location, as well as, uh, along the Avenida Pico scenic view corridor. So we'll be discussing several of those components. The, just to give a little, um, history about the development review of the project, or site, initially back in 1988, a 27 hotel room development was approved by the city, which did not move forward. Uh, and then later in 1998, uh, the city, as well as the coastal commission, approved a five-story, um, 39,000-square-foot mixed-use project. Uh, approximately 45,000 square feet of that was, uh, associated with the subterranean parking, um, but the remainder was 27 timeshares, as well as approximately 10,000 square feet of commercial area. Uh, the project did receive a mitigated negative declaration that was certified and recorded. Following that, uh, the entitlements did expire for that project, and no other proposals that have been considered by the city advanced to planning commission for consideration until today. Apologies, we have a later draft of the presentation here before you, but, um, the, the project has evolved through the most recent iteration of the project submittal. Its first review and consideration by the city's design review subcommittee was back in 2022, uh, which was proposing 49 hotel rooms, as well as a 3,200-square-foot restaurant and 88, or 888-square-foot cafe. Uh, this is approximately 75% of the square footage of the commercial area of the 1991 approval, or 1998 approval, that received the mitigated negative declaration. As part of the project review, um, staff also reached out to the coastal commission in advance of moving forward to hearing, uh, as well as a second design review subcommittee meeting to get their feedback, since a coastal development permit will be required to be obtained through the coastal commission. So staff did have, um, several coordinated meetings, as well as a site visit with key coastal, coastal commission staff. Um, and through those meetings, there were additional feedback, primarily on two fronts. One is emphasizing, um, the retention of ocean views along the Avenida Pico scenic corridor, as well as providing 24, 25% affordable overnight accommodations, uh, or hotel rooms. So as a result of that, those, uh, the feedback from the design review subcommittee, as well as coastal commission, has been incorporated into this project. In addressing the 25% affordability, which is 16 rooms, the, the room count was increased to a total of 61 rooms, um, to compensate for the, the lost revenue for market rate hotel rooms. Additionally, the design was stepped from one to three stories away from Avenida Pico to, um, retain the view corridor and ocean views, um, as well as they added a rooftop restaurant and terrace and public spaces to provide additional opportunities and, and new ocean views, uh, that, um, have not existed before, um, as well as the, uh, breaking up the configuration of the site to provide some views through the site, which we'll, we'll identify later in the presentation. Um, and then, to address trash service and, and larger deliveries, a loading area was added to the front of the property, which we'll discuss, and additional landscaping. So here we have just a breakdown of the project. Again, it's a 61 hotel room boutique hotel, with 25% of those rooms being affordable at 16 rooms. The rooftop restaurant and bar is also incorporated in on that third floor, which would be providing alcohol service, as well to the, as well as to the, um, the pool area, which is accessible only to, to guests. Uh, there would be two cafes, predominantly one, uh, adjacent to the lobby, which I'll identify in the floor plan, and then a, a walk-up cafe, uh, adjacent to the loading area. So the project is also proposing amplified music, which is intended to be mood-setting for the pool and the restaurant, uh, with no live entertainment. There is, uh, two subterranean parking levels that are providing 104 parking spaces, uh, which is, um, a surplus of three of what's required for the site. And then, as you can see here, just with this initial first elevation, the project is proposing to incorporate Spanish colonial revival architecture, which was reviewed and commented on by the design review subcommittee. So the development permit is required due to the fact that the project is, um, a commercial building located within the architectural overlay, um, so as a result, Spanish colonial revival architecture, as, as stated, is incorporated in the project design. Oh.
One moment, we're going to switch over to the updated version of that presentation.
Thank you, Tamara. All right, just give me one minute here. There we go. So, uh, here we have the site plan, um, illustrating the, the first floor, general configuration of the project. Um, the project is incorporated in a three-foot setback around the perimeter of the property to, um, address fire, uh, fire access requirements, as well as building code requirements. So, that's been incorporated in the project design, as well as, you can see, it's in a somewhat U-shaped configuration. However, along Avenida Pico, um, there are some openings to provide those view, um, opportunities through the site, uh, from the public areas. And then access to the parking garage is located along North El Camino Real, furthest from the entrance of the, or furthest from the, um, intersection of North El Camino Real and Avenida Pico. Here we go. Here's, uh, here's, uh, the loading area, a zoomed-in configuration of that. So as you can see, um, there's been a, a loading pocket that's been incorporated into the project within the, uh, property bounds of the site, um, to provide for that trash service, as well as, uh, large deliveries, where, uh, they would not be able to access the, the subterranean parking areas. So, the configuration of the site, um, and operations results in the trash being stored within the subterranean parking, but upon trash service day, those bins are located into the, where you can see here in the yellow area, adjacent to the, um, the stairway, within an enclosed element, um, that could be serviced, uh, upon the arrival of the trash facility. In addition to that, um, there is, the public sidewalk does go around the radius and then traverses along the, um, the median area, so as to not create any, uh, obstructions for pedestrians, uh, in traversing along the, the corner where the loading area is, as well as providing a, a sidewalk, as you can see that's striped there, um, to, to the site, to access either the, the walk-up cafe, or the, the, uh, the stairs up to the podium level. Here we have just a cross-section illustrating the, uh, subterranean, the two levels of the subterranean, uh, parking for the garage, providing that 104 parking spaces. Uh, as you can see, it's incorporated in, the building's actually set down into the grade along the, uh, corner to, um, ensure compliance with the subterranean parking So as stated, the, the project does, is proposing, um, a couple of different uses. First, the hotel, uh, so we've got 61 hotel rooms, the parking rate is one space per hotel room, with an additional space required for each 10 rooms, so the applicant's providing 68 spaces there. The parking rate for restaurants and cafes within this area, since it's associated with the central business district, is one space per five seats. So that allocation has been provided here in the table, as you can see, the rooftop restaurant proposing 142 seats, is resulting in, uh, 28.4 spaces. And then the, uh, outdoor cafe and the walk-up, or I'm sorry, the, the interior cafe, uh, adjoining with the lobby, as well as the walk-up cafe, um, are providing, um, seating as well. However, uh, the city's zoning ordinance does allow for eight, eight seats to be credited, uh, or not parked, uh, and as a result, the project is providing, um, a surplus of three There we go. Here's the configuration of the first floor of the project, as illustrated before on the site plan, and so, as you can see here in green is the hotel rooms, uh, the yellow is the guest amenity areas, um, including the lobby, um, restaurant bar area, as well as some, um, uh, back-of-house elements. And then the brown is just the, the common access, the elevators and the stairways. So, here you can see that, that U-shaped configuration, along with some openings to provide that, uh, view through Avenida Pico. Here's the second floor plan, which is at the, um, uh, you can see that, um, that first floor element located at the corner, the intersection, is only one story, and then, uh, the majority along Avenida Pico is just remaining at one story, with, uh, with, with the exception of two rooms. Uh, again, to try to maintain as much of the view corridor as possible. And then the, uh, the massing and the structural element are pulled to the far corners of the lot, along the, um, we'll call it the, the northern or back portion of the lot, as well as the portion, uh, along the northmost corner, along the side, adjacent to the Catalyst Surf Shop.
Could you go back to the first floor, and show me how a car would enter?
So...
They'd come in from Pico there.
Yes, they come in from Pico, I, oh, whoop. Didn't mean to do that. There we go. Um, so do you see the, where it says El Camino Real, right there? Uh, that is the driveway entrance down to the subterranean parking structure, right there.
So when you're dropping your, like, you're pulling in your car, they're dropping off your family, where do they go in?
They go in, straight where it says El Camino Real, that's the driveway there.
As the car's going down to the parking lot, they got to get out? I mean, is it going a little subterranean, and then they have to get out? I mean, is it going a little subterranean and then they have to get out?
There's, there's an exiting area. We've got a floor plans of the subterranean parking level, but there's, there's access through at the subterranean parking level to.
When you first get there, where do you unload your car with your, like, say, your people, like your wife and your kids?
Within the subterranean parking level.
Oh, you got to go down into the subterranean parking?
Yes, at the first level.
Why don't we let him finish?
Yeah, there might be opportunities for that loading area. However, staff is encouraging that to not be heavily utilized, is not wanting to create any queuing or, or issues there. And so the predominant access to the hotel is going to be through that subterranean parking level for vehicles. And then here's that second floor again. And then here's the third floor. So as you can see on the third floor, there's really no third floor building elements adjacent to Avenida Pico. And the rooftop restaurant, which you can see is predominantly in the yellow in the center and uppermost portion, is mostly open. And the enclosed area there is furthest to the left to provide and enhance the, the views through the view corridor. And then you can see again in green, the, the hotel rooms are along that most left side here. And then, let's see. Here we go. So this is a rendering of the site from the corner of the, where the Miramar Theater is located. So looking at the site, looking north, as you can see, the, the two-story, one and two-story elements along Avenida Pico, with the three stories stepping to the back portion of the lot. So again, this project is incorporating in Spanish colonial revival architecture. And the project architect has incorporated in some Spanish elements that are representative of some of the other historic resources in the area with the use of turrets, as well as traditional Spanish colonial revival materials and styling to, one, be consistent with the architectural overlay, but two, be complementary to the adjacent historic district, which we'll discuss in more detail. So we'll be walking you through some of the predominant elevations of the project. Here, the predominant elevation along Avenida Pico, so as you're traversing down or looking from the U-Haul site at the project site, you're seeing really a stepping and breaking up of the massing of the structure. Again, with the separation of the two buildings along Avenida Pico, you're provided, provided enhanced views. So this is, again, one of the prominent gateway frontages here. So the design has been intended to enhance these views, as well, as well as provide a pedestrian scale along Avenida Pico with the massing that's been proposed, as well as being sensitive to the scenic corridor and limiting the, to one and two stories. So next, we have the north elevation. So this would be at the back of the lot, facing Pico Park. So here you've got a three-story element. There's landscaping that's proposed at the back of the lot, vertical landscaping to soften the massing, as well as the incorporation of inset windows and doors, as well as Juliet balconies, open decks, to further reduce and break up the massing of the structure. And as you can see here at the top along the roof, for the restaurant, it is an open design. So the roof area for the restaurant has been eliminated to retain and open those ocean views and open elements to, to provide that. But then also, as you can see, there's three chimneys that are illustrated here. Those are functioning as mechanical venting to, to address and mitigate any kind of aesthetic impact. So they've been screened, incorporating within that, which I believe was a guidance from the design review subcommittee recommendation. There we go. So here's the North El Camino Real elevation, which is obviously a predominant, an additional predominant gateway elevation of the property. As you can see here, we've identified here that the access to the parking garage where guests would be parking to, to get out and access the hotel. Again, here you can see additional representation of the decks, one, to break up the massing, but then also, two, to take advantage of the ocean views and be sensitive to the architectural sensitivity of the, the area in that we've got the adjacent North Beach Historic District. And again, you can see the, the way the, the stepping of the project design is creating as much reduction in massing along Avenida Pico, but then also the building has been set into the grade to reduce its massing as well and overall height. And then you can see the other turret element more prominently here on the, on the left-hand side of the screen, which is, which is a key and prominent architectural element that is also reflective of the Spanish colonial revival design. Here and lastly, we have the west elevation. So this would be facing what we'll call up North El Camino Real. It's adjacent to the Catalyst Building. So we've stenciled that in here. Again, it's providing a three-foot separation here, trying to move the massing as, as far away from Avenue, the intersection and Avenue to Pico as possible. So there still is articulation that's been incorporated into the project design with the building offsets here. Staff has also discussed, and the design review subcommittee was supportive of, the opportunity to create a gateway visual element with the use of these three brown panels that are illustrated here. So if there is an opportunity in the future to provide a mural or some kind of gateway architectural element or, element, then the applicant is willing to enter into a license agreement with the city where the city could commission art to be placed on there to, to fulfill the city council's desire for creating gateway elements. It is important to note that while the Catalyst Building is there, a future building could be developed. And so the city was sensitive to the fact that, that art could be blocked. And so staff believed that this license agreement was a, a good outcome in, in that approach. So again, as, as previously stated, the project is located along a scenic view corridor along Avenue to Pico. And so as part of that, as previously stated, the three-story elements have been pushed to the back and, and the most northern portions of the structure or the site to be sensitive to that. In addition to that, the project has incorporated in public elements and access that creates new and additional views. And that's inclusive of the, the landscape areas adjacent to the intersection, as well as the terrace at the pool podium level. And then the restaurant, which is accessible to the public, will create new publicly accessible views. So as a result of being sensitive to the views, there's been concessions that have been incorporated into the project in that the, the density in the allowed hotel rooms for this site is 64, however, the applicant's proposing 61. Also important to note that 16 of those are at an affordable rate to, to be in alignment with coastal commission policy guidance, as well as the FAR is below the maximum. And then just sensitivity in the overall design to protect those scenic views. So here we have, on the left-hand side, the, the coastal land use plan, as well as the general plan, public view corridor map. Here you can see the red dot there, which is representative of, of the particular project simulation on the right-hand side. So that's what, that particular point is significant in that this is the, you know, the most predominant view from the scenic corridor. And as, you know, those that are familiar with the area and the site, this topographical and street configuration here is you're, you're traveling downhill on a curve into, you know, a designated gateway element, which is, you know, an urban design, as well as with established mature trees, as well as other, you know, commercial elements. So there's already a lot of existing obstructions here, but as you can see from this photo, it's in alignment with everything that's there to retain that scenic corridor condition. Here is the view from Pico Park. Again, this is the most extreme possible conditions. This is a visual simulation, but as you can see here, the massing is pulled back from Avenue to Pico, you know, stepping from one to three stories. And there's still an opportunity to preserve blue water ocean views. And this is at a lower elevation. And below this is a commercially zoned property that has the potential to be developed as well. And so there's an opportunity for additional visual obstructions if and when that site were to be developed. As part of the overall site plan and landscape design, there was a lot of thought that went into the landscape layout and the configuration of the site. And there's an enhanced landscaping along the intersection and Avenue to Pico to contribute to that gateway element and policies from, from the city's general plan, as well as the land use plan, to contribute to and enhance those public views, as well as just public amenities. So this is proposing, you know, a walkway path, as well as art and decorative landscaping incorporated in on the project site, not in the public right away, but on the public site. So to, to further enhance the project design, as well as the public amenities. As previously stated, the project is located adjacent to the North, North Beach Historic District. There's five contributing properties, as you can see, identified here. And so the project architect was sensitive to, to that, in that we have five historic resources, as well as the district here, and wanted to be complementary, but not overbearing or impact. And so that's why that design configuration was proposed in terms of the one-story along Avenue to Pico, and then the three-story elements being pushed back to the, to the most northerly and westerly corners of the site, as well as the proposal for the, for the Spanish colonial revival, to be sensitive to all the key components. The project, as previously stated, did go through two reviews by the design review subcommittee, first in 2022. At that time, there was some feedback that was provided to want to ensure view preservation related to the scenic corridor is maintained, as well as being sensitive to the massing and scale, and incorporating architectural integration and enhancements into the overall design. Again, after that, there was guidance that was provided to provide 25% affordable hotel rooms. So an additional enhancements were done and modifications to the project design, at which time it went back earlier this year in April of 2025. And the designer subcommittee provided some minor comments, as well as some additional analysis to be incorporated in to ensure that the scenic corridor, as well as the historic compatibility, was justified and thoroughly evaluated as part of the project, which has been incorporated in, as long as, as well as some architectural enhancements. So these revisions are reflective of those to ensure the, all the direction provided by the design review subcommittee was incorporated. So as part of the project, it is required a conditional use permit for three components, one for the hotel use, two, the full range alcohol service and amplified music, as well as the outdoor restaurant seating. So the hotel use is conditionally require, or requires a conditional use permit due to its location in the M youth one zoning district. Again, the project is in performance with all the hotel requirements in terms of parking, as well as the development standards, and is in compliance with the coastal commission guidance for providing 25% affordable overnight accommodations. Hotel use, as well as the, the other restaurant uses and cafes that are incorporated into the site, have been determined by staff to be compatible with the surrounding uses, which are in alignment with the, the, the commercial, as well as the residential area, and in alignment with the Ole Hanson vision for this being an entertainment district. Also important to note that this is, you know, a site that is very connected to multiple transit opportunities in terms of it's, you know, 350 feet from the MetroLink station. It's along, it's got a bus stop, as well as a trolley stop. It's located along the Coastal Trail, as well as the bike path, and all the amenities are within this area. So it's really in alignment with all those key components. In addition to that, the full-service alcohol is being proposed, which is in typical alignment with any hotel, or hotel and/or restaurant use, which would be servicing that rooftop bar, or restaurant and bar, as well as the pool and, pool uses. And so this service would be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then indoor, it would be allowed primarily for the rooftop restaurant to terminate at midnight or, or 12:00 AM. And then in addition to that, best management practice has been incorporated into the conditions of approval, which are standard by the city. In alignment with the alcohol services, the amplified music, which is in close alignment with the hours of operation, in that the amplified music, which is intended to be ambient mood setting, there's no live entertainment happening here. It's only, you know, for just mood setting. And so the hours of that are proposed to be 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then indoors, if it's proposed to go later than that, then the windows and doors would need to be closed. So this is in alignment with the city's noise ordinance, and there's conditions of approval to ensure alignment with the, what's being proposed. As a result of the amplified music being proposed, the applicant did provide an encusical study to confirm that what's being proposed would not be detrimental to the adjacent sensitive uses. And as you can see here on the table on the right-hand side, the project is in alignment with the noise standards here. The ambient level is actually exceeding what the noise levels that would be experienced at these different sensitive receptors here, which are the commercial uses, as well as the most near, near residential site, which is S5, is a residential property that's located just behind the, the casino. So it's all, and then the other most residential location is at Marblehead Coastal, as well as the Cabo Shores Mobile Home Park, which are all in alignment with the noise standards. And then lastly, we have the outdoor restaurant seating. So this is inclusive of all the, the rooftop restaurant, as well as the, the lobby cafe, and then the walk-up cafe. So this is consistent with restaurants and businesses within the central business district that are trying to encourage pedestrian interaction and activity. This is in alignment with the North Beach focus area of the city's general plan. And the, the seating and furnishing in these areas are intended to be low to not impact any public views and, and are, would be able to be moved, moved around. So as part of the project analysis by staff and is looked at several documents, at policy documents, inclusive of the city's general plan, as well as the coastal land use plan, and then Title 17 zoning code or ordinance, as well as the, the noise ordinance regulations and within the city's municipal code. And so key requirements and policy elements that we were reviewing as a result of that, ensuring that what's being proposed is visitor-serving and complementary to the central business district overlay. We've got a Spanish colonial revival architecture incorporated into the design. revival architecture incorporated into the design as well as being sensitive to coastal and public access as well as the adjacent historic district and public views. So staff has found that the project is in alignment with all of those particular provisions. And just to touch on some of those from the LUP as well as the general plan, again, the project is incorporated in public access with the rooftop restaurant as well as some of the public landscape areas near the intersection as well as the the public viewing terrace area at the podium level. Again, the also the 25% affordable overnight accommodations as well as its location in a transit hub area. And then lastly, you know, protection and sensitivity to the view corridor and the North Beach Historic District. Here, just to touch on some of those connectivity items is again, is located adjacent to a bus stop, MetroLink, the bike path and the beach trail. So there's a lot of connectivity here where somebody could be visiting the site from a number of different modes of transportation, which is in alignment with the city's general plan as well as the land use plan. So as part of the development team review or city department's reviews, there are a few notable conditions of approval that have been incorporated into the project, which were in your staff report. One, that the driveway access provide a stenciling down on the ground to ensure that we have a right turn only. We don't want anybody turning left out of this area. So just ensure for vehicular safety. And then somewhat related to that is for pedestrian safety, there was a planter area that was located along the cafe here. You can see in the X. Public Works is recommending that that planter area be eliminated to ensure for adequate line of sight for pedestrians to avoid any safety issues. And then lastly, as stated, the the conditional approval related to the amplified music is incorporated into the project. There we go. So as a result of the analysis by staff, staff has determined that the project does qualify for the Class 32 infill exemption. And then in addition to that, as a result of the mitigated negative deck that was approved and certified back in 1998, the project that's before you is less significant than that. And there's no additional identified criteria that would require additional review. So in addition to the infill exemption, this mitigated negative deck could also be relied on by the city. So staff is recommending adoption of the draft resolution for approval with the attached conditions. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Thanks for that, John. That's a nice presentation. So we're going to move on to the questions of staff specifically about the project. And then later on, we'll get into our discussion before making a decision. We're still going to have the applicant do their presentation, but first, why don't we get any questions that we have, just to clarify the design or anything about the project? Start on the end there with Commissioner Freeman again.
So, John, I sent you an email on Monday. You responded to my questions very thorough, much like this presentation. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you, by the way. So the one question that that I wanted everybody else to hear, because I was just trying to get up to speed, was the the third question I asked. I don't know if you have that with you, but if not, from a planning perspective, what did you see as a key policy issue Commissioner should focus on while weighing approval?
Absolutely. So as discussed at the tail end of the presentation, there's a lot of policy documents and policies that are applicable to this, most notably the general plan as well as the land use plan and the zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance establishes essentially the development regulations with the project, which through staff's analysis it is in alignment with all those. So we've got development that meets all the critical development standards. Related to the use, that's also in the zoning ordinance, but then also in the general plan and the coastal land use plan. And so we want to ensure that we have a use that's being compatible with the zoning and land use designations here. As a hotel, it is alignment with the North Beach focus area and providing a hotel to be contributing factor to the city's vision for this particular area as well as the Ole Hanson vision for the area as an entertainment district. And so with that, as well as providing additional supportive uses for the restaurant and cafes to activate the area and provide alignment in the Central Business District pedestrian-related uses as well as in architectural design, the Spanish colonial revival. So all of those critical design elements and features of the project have been incorporated in. But in addition to that, the access elements, which are important because, one, they're incorporated into our policy documents, but also this is a project that's going to be going to the Coastal Commission for a coastal development permit. And so staff had coordination with Coastal Commission to ensure the project was in alignment with their policy regulations. And so the affordable overnight accommodations at 25% have been incorporated in the project design as well as being sensitive to the view corridor. And lastly, the creation of new and new views that are not currently present and which the public will be able to enjoy at the restaurant as well as the public terrace and the the new landscape area along at the intersection. So staff saw all those critical elements is very important to the analysis and what the planning commission could should be considering.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very nice report, very comprehensive. I was very impressed with it. I've got just a couple of questions.
Sorry. Tell me, and I, I'm sorry, I won't start that way. The affordability component, I get that the Coastal Commission is interested in that. And, okay, who is going to be enforcing that? How does it get enforced? Is it a condition that the city is putting on this applicant? Or is it just, hey, the Coastal Commission wants this affordability component, so you might as well know about it now before you go before them? Is that what happens?
It's mostly the latter. And the city does have some policies related to affordable overnight accommodations. However, it's not, you know, very rigidly worded.
Okay.
And so, yeah, in preparation for the Coastal Commission and application, we wanted to make sure that the design was reflective of what would be requirements anticipated by the Coastal Commission.
And so the city is, in these conditions of approval, there's nothing that says the city is requiring that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I ask that because frankly, I don't understand it. It's just one person's opinion. When there are hotels up the street that are affordable and hotels down the street that are affordable and everyone has free choice to go where they can afford to go, but that's that's neither here nor there. I'm very glad to hear it's not a condition that the city of San Clemente is going to have to monitor or enforce. That's very important for me to hear. So thank you for that. The only other question that I had was something that I also emailed you about on Monday. And Jonathan, you expanded on it in the response, and I'd like people to hear that. And the question was about the Marblehead homes. While they are not within the 300-feet notification requirements, in my experience, noise travels uphill. And I was very concerned about whether that community was aware of this public hearing. And Jonathan, I'll let you say what you said to me.
Sure. So the city has a standard notification radius. It's 300 feet, as was just mentioned. It's not 300 feet from the center of the parcel. It's from the outer perimeter. So a larger parcel would certainly have a larger circle that those notifications are sent to. Within that 300 feet, it does include a parcel of open space that's owned by the Sea Summit Homeowners Association. So the HOA would have received notice by mail of this, as well as any time that we do noticing that is published as well. All public hearings are published in the San Clemente Times. So those are the two different ways that notification would have been provided.
Thank you, Jonathan. And for me, that's it. I think it was a very comprehensive report, and your presentation was great. So I'm in good shape for the moment.
Yeah, great job, John. Regarding the affordable, how is that determined? Who gets them? I mean, it's like you put in a reservation, you send your last year's tax return or what? I mean, what does that look like?
It's it's not like affordable housing in that regard. Yeah, I mean, it's really just related to, you know, the availability of the hotel and how that is. So the, yeah, there's no restrictions in terms of who can book the room. It's really just, it's just part of the the availability and the pricing that would be incorporated in. And typically with hotel projects and the Coastal Commission, they require an annual audit to be, you know, ensure consistency with the any regulations or conditions that the Coastal Commission would put on a on a project related to affordable overnight accommodations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Preskill off that.
I have no questions other than to commend John for his detailed report. I appreciate that. That was a lot of work, lot to read, and you condensed it for us. Thank you very much.
I think your questions of approach and also the right turn coming out were answered.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. John, you mentioned this negative deck from a previously approved project in 98. How is that relevant to this project? I mean, is it automatic or because it's less intense in terms of the development? Can you explain that?
Yeah, it would be, I'll let the city attorney weigh in or make any corrections, but it would be automatic in that the environmental assessment has already been completed. And we're documenting that it is less than significant. There's no new issues that have arisen that require additional studies. In addition to that, staff did identify that the project would qualify for the infill exemption as well.
Okay. So so that we're not even evaluating that at this point?
Can we chime in? Yeah, just high level. So under SEQA, there's 33 categorical exemptions for different classes of that you're most accustomed to seeing, which would be single-family and duplex residences, small infill developments, historic rehabilitations, things of that sort. But there are other exemptions that are included within the SEQA guidelines. And in this case, so one of those categoricals exemptions applies because this property is less than five acres, so it falls under the infill exemption. When there are more than one that apply, we'll typically highlight all of those for the commission to be aware of. Section 15162 under SEQA says that if a city has already made a project go through this process and get to the point of developing a document, the city may not do that again unless it presents substantial evidence that that new project is different or more intense than what was evaluated before. So in this case, because the prior project is more intense than the current project, we're also including that particular exemption.
Okay. So that's an exemption in a way, but are there any others that they're requesting because of the affordable component or everything else is within the zoning?
Yes. Yes, sir.
The traffic study, I know we had requested that at Design Review, which was included. Just by way of notation, I think 444-page report is a new record, possibly. Do you think? Who knows? I don't know. I'm sure you guys all read the entire report. A detail of a couple, well, actually, another question. I don't see anything other than those recommended murals referring to signage, whether it's project signage or or anything. Does that will that come to us separately, I assume?
Yeah, that would be a separate entitlement application that would be coming before the Planning Commission.
Okay. I mean, I don't see a lot of obvious locations for signage on the architecture. So was there at least any suggestions of where that might go? The applicant might fill us in on that, maybe?
I think in in the plan set, there's some suggestive plan elements that identify that. I can try to find that plan sheet, but there's some identification in terms of they're planning on incorporating in some information and historic background along the the landscaped area along with some some art pieces. And so in addition to that, I think that they're discussing the opportunity where there's a the stair access up to the podium has like a curved wall that you can see adjacent to the subterranean parking area. That is a possible opportunity. And
Can you open the drawings, John?
No, we're not able to do that.
Well, we're not evaluating that tonight anyway, right? I mean, we just want to make sure that it's been considered.
Yeah, it's been considered, and it's provided on A30 of the smittal package. And it indicates that it will be under a deferred smittal.
Okay.
We have corner signage as well as we have other signage throughout the buildings.
Okay.
And it's in general conformance, proposals in general conformance with the city signage policy.
Okay. It's just, it's such an outstanding design. I'd like to make, you know, make sure that signage is incorporated.
Definitely.
Integrated. Another more detailed question. So the dumpsters are located down in the parking garage. And I think it was on the upper level, right?
Yes, the first level.
So on trash day, kind of like we take our cans out to the street, somebody's going to have to bring those dumpsters up and put them in that area on grade?
Correct. There's there's some mechanical equipment that's anticipated to be utilized. I can let the architect speak to that in one more detail.
Okay, you can you can maybe touch on that when you make your presentation. But yeah, those are big and heavy and smelly. And I wouldn't want to be the person doing that. So I'm just curious how that works.
Commissioner Kemp, I do have one question.
I think that's only questions I had.
I have one. No, I just, John, can you explain to me or remind me, I'm looking at the ambient music, if they wanted other entertainment, actual entertainment, do they have to apply for a permit? Is that how it works?
Yes, a permit would be applied for, there's, you know, one-off events that are allowed through a different permit process. And then if they wanted to have that incorporated into the operations of the site, you know, regularly without limitation, then they would be coming back in for amendment to the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
So, John, one last question for you. The opening to the garage, is there a door for security or is it just open?
It's just open.
It's just open?
Yeah.
We'll talk later. Okay, so the applicant has an opportunity now to make a presentation. I see that the architect is present. You have 10 minutes, and then we can also dialogue after that.
Yeah, we don't really have too much to say other than thank you to the staff and thank you to engineering for working with us and providing a complete presentation and proposal. But on your couple of questions that we did have with respect to acoustics, we anticipate at Marblehead also having comments or at least questions. So we actually asked our acoustic acoustician to actually look at that. And the decibel proposals at that level are 26 based on the current design. So up at Marblehead, the acoustics should be relatively low. Additionally, looking at signage, we do have a proposal in the package that also refers to it as a deferred smittle, but it is a proposal showing that it has been thought through and put into the package. With that said, I'm here for questions.
Okay. John, can you put that up? John, can you put that up by any chance at A, you say A3 or?
A3. It's not, it's not in the presentation plan set.
Oh, it's not, but we have it in our...
You have it on yours and it identifies different locations and signage inspiration, utilizing or and being in compliance with the architectural overlay requirements in that signage be handcrafted in appearance with a multitude of different materials, including tile, wood, metal, as well as, you know, some painted and art inspiration that would be incorporated into the... Yeah, we can pass this around, maybe?
And then while that's passing around, as well on the loading with respects to trash, we do have a will serve letter from CRNR that proposes a chase truck. So we basically provide it a small trash at the top that's typically empty and the trash is in the building with a chute. So basically the trash truck or the chase truck will bring the trash up and basically put it in the holding bins on, at street level on trash day. And then based on when there is a truck there at loading, we have automated bollards that will come up. So if there is a truck there, nobody can turn in. So we have thought through the loading a little bit. And if, and toll engineering has actually looked at whether the chase truck will actually fit in the garage or not, and it does.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Just clarify for me on the acoustics level relatively. 26 is medium-low?
I printed out a chart here for you guys because, believe me, I ask the same questions every day.
What is high, what is low?
26 is very, is very, very low.
Described here as faint.
Faint, okay.
Faint? The sound of fainty.
I didn't make it up.
Doesn't, doesn't our, doesn't our noise ordinance allow up to like 55 or something?
Correct.
26 is like super low.
Thank you. Super faint.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you, sir. Just, we'll have a public comment, it looks like, and then if you can be available to answer any questions, that'd be great. So I have...
And this is the proposed signage and public art. Public art in the front garden as well as on the building and then proposed signage on the street corner as well as at the entry. We're thinking of the signage being very subtle, but it will be apparent that it is a hotel. And we're also thinking about the front artist garden to be, it's public access and it's also for cafe dining. And you'll actually, I think, I think based on my design and based on the elevation of the site, that you will actually have views sitting in that garden up there of, of the sunset, looking back towards the beach.
Nice. Yeah, I'll open the public hearing. I thought we didn't have, sorry. I have one speaker, Francis Engler. Please come forward. You have three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Francis Engler. I'm a director with Hotel Workers Union, United here Local 11. I live in San Clemente and I appreciate the informative presentation and I have five questions. First, I'm asking if the 1.5-page memo on biological assessment is enough and should the city consider more robust mitigation in this area? The staff report contains a one-and-a-half-page habitat memo that concludes that the project site does not contain habitat of value for the federally protected California gnatcatcher. Now, this is important because this site is right up against the Sea Summit Park where I hike quite a bit. And as soon as you go into that site, one of the first things you see are these plaques celebrating the gnatcatcher because of the coastal scrub environment there. And I've personally seen them there just up the hill from right where from the site is. So the, so the question I have is, is it true that the memo is based on a single-site visit? That seems to be what's indicated there. There isn't any photo documentation provided in the memo that I see. I believe that the memo says that there was a brief literature review and a search of Google images, although I don't believe those are provided. The memo states in paragraph two that the native coastal sage scrub and other native landscaping are at the site, that coastal scrub is potential habitat for the California gnatcatcher, as referenced in past Coastal Commission cases near this very project site, which included much more thorough conversation about potential biological impacts. Also, native plant experts have notified me of the possible presence of the plant Dudlia Blockmania, which is the Blockman's Dudlia. They say it's present on a small bluff adjacent to the surf shop near the corner of Pico that's just outside the site area here. This species has been assigned a ranking of 1B1 by the Native, California Native Plant Society in their inventory of rare plants, which is the foremost science-based assessment of native plant conservation statuses in California. It has a state conservation rating of S2, which essentially translates to imperiled. These experts say that there are probably less than 40 colonies of this plant in the world. So that's my first area of questions. The second question is, why is the city not doing a more thorough SEQA review? I mean, under SEQA, categorical exemptions can't rely on mitigation measures to achieve the no significant impact on the environment designation, but mitigation measures can be properly relied on if you use a more thorough review like an MND or an EIR. The project, but the project does seem to be relying on mitigation measures such as conditions 1.9 about light and 4.5, which defers the noise study to consider impacts on noise, specifically the sea-weighted decibels that are common for bass thumping frequencies. But we can't, I can't find where the city has a sea-weighted regulatory performance threshold. And this is important because these areas of noise and light can have impact on the nearby sensitive species, especially when you have them till 10 o'clock at night, because normally this park gets really quiet when you get to a certain place on that. Finally, I just want to ask about, to check the grading on the floors, because it says it's supposed to be three stories, but some of the drawings look like three and a half and four there. So I'll stop there. That doesn't mean I'm out of time, right?
Thank you for your comments. I believe the issue with the exemption was already addressed by Jonathan. I think that's all we need, right? Do you have anything to add to that?
I would just, so there's a couple of things. So there's two, again, two exemptions that the city's relying on. The first is the infill exemption. The infill exemption does make reference to certain types of considerations that should be evaluated that other categorical exemptions don't, including biological and traffic. And that's why we did conduct studies in this case, which are not done for all categorical exemptions. But those were done and city staff does rely on consultants in these cases. So consultants who do site visits and provide us their professional opinion of whether or not there are species of concern, et cetera. And if there are, then that triggers a different level of review. In this case, they didn't note that there were. And yes, the, the other exemption doesn't get into that consideration again because it was evaluated fully previously and certified. So the city can rely on either of those two exemptions.
Okay, thank you. That's the only blue card I have on this project, so. Thanks for your help, Scott. I think it's time for us to get into our discussion.
Vice, vice chair, we do have, the applicant does have an opportunity to rebut the public comments.
Would you like to rebut, sir?
I appreciate Jonathan's comments.
Okay. So we're good?
Yes, so if there's no more questions, then we would close the public hearing.
Okay, let's close the public hearing. No, they didn't give me a blue card, so they can't speak. Okay, I'd just like to say it's, you know, we're allowed to get excited about a project. And as this, I don't think has ever been developed, this property, right? It's been vacant and probably one of the most important locations in our city in terms of being, you know, a gateway and an opportunity to make some sort of an announcement. Not to mention the fact that we need hotel rooms in our city, but we don't want to just put any hotel. So I think it's, you know, it's a great opportunity. But yeah, we want to evaluate what's being proposed. As a guest representative here from the Design Review Subcommittee, I can't believe it was almost three years, two and a half years, I guess, between the first time we reviewed this project and the second time. And although there were significant improvements, if you guys had a chance to look at the previous design that we saw in '22 and then the, the one that was brought to us in '25, there were some, you know, very compelling improvements, I thought. Certainly details need to be worked out, but I'd like to see us get to, you know, a position where we can make a decision, kind of an informed decision. So probably a good way to start is for us to just, maybe we'll start with Commissioner Prescott Lefler this time and just hear your comments about the project.
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank the staff. This was a lot of heavy lifting on your part and Commissioner Kemp for chairing tonight. Excellent job. The Design Review Commission also heavy lifting on this. I appreciate all their input up to this date and the applicant for following every letter. Nicely done. This meets all the crucial development standards. The architectural design has been met. Sensitivity to the Coastal Commission, all their asks, that's hard to do. This covered the ambient amplify music that I had questions about and you are being sensitive to the neighbors. In addition, I think you have covered all the environmental issues that have been brought up this evening. I would be completely and 100% in support of this project going forward.
I, she kind of stole my thunder. I agree with all the points that she has mentioned, plus I think it's been under significant review and I'm ready to vote on the project.
Okay, Scott?
Yeah, just echoing what's been said. This fits in beautifully in the North Beach Historic District. It's beautifully designed. It was extremely responsive to Coastal Commission, to city staff and the DRSC comments. I can easily make all the findings in the staff report and find that we can rely on two different SEQA legs to stand on to support this project, so I'm fully in supportive of this project.
Patrick?
Thank you. I concur with everything that's been said. This is a fantastic project, very well-designed. Thank you for making the changes that were requested. I'm, I'm very pleased to be part of the planning commission during this approval. This is an important project for the city, so I'll be supporting it.
Okay. Well, the nice thing about being last is everybody said everything I've already thought of. So I really appreciate all the hard work John and Jonathan have done on this, the rest of the staff, the architect and the, and the whole project in general. It, it, I think it's going to be a crowning jewel in that part of our town and I'm ready to go vote on it.
Excellent. Yeah, I agree. You know, we did have an opportunity to really evaluate it in detail when it came before the Design Review Subcommittee. So that makes our job a lot easier, I think, at this, at this level. We hadn't received the traffic study when we recommended going to planning commission. That's now in there. It's a Level C, which is better than a Level D, which is still acceptable. So I think that's important to consider. You know, we're hopeful that this project will move ahead quickly. We've had some history of projects stalling out. I thought it was interesting even to see the feasibility and market studies as a part of our report because it's important. We want this to be a successful project in the city. I don't know, we've talked about this before, Jonathan, you know, there's not much we can do to speed things along, but certainly, you know, with the Olympics coming into town, maybe that'll incentivize them a little bit to, you know, move this thing forward. But yeah, congratulations on, you know, great design and finally getting something built at this location, which I think is, is going to set a nice precedent for our city on, you know, sort of the one end, which is an important landmark and kind of an entrance to the city. So yeah, kudos. Anxious, anxious to see this move forward. So if I can get a motion, we probably don't have to sit here and talk anymore.
I move approval of, of this project as, as recommended in the staff report regarding the categorical exemptions from SEQA and that we adopt Resolution PC 25-013 approving public hearing Project 25-323, the Hanson Hotel, subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, congratulations. You're approved. Thank you.
Really quickly, just for the record, there is a 10-day appeal period on this decision.
I'm going to suggest before we go to the next one that we just have a short recess, if that's okay? It's been requested. 15 minutes? Okay, we're going to have a 15-minute recess, everyone.
Do you guys have Wi-Fi here?
We have.
Did they tell it? Did they tell you what the code is?
No, I brought my own. I brought a drive.
Because mine now says, the first meeting when I had this...
You know what, they were, they shut down the Wi-Fi because it's, you have to take, I just realized, you have to take, give this back to the city. I just realized, you have to take, give this back to the city.
I apologize for that. We'll come back to order. Thank you for taking a break, so I could join you all. And I apologize for the weather in Dallas. That kept me from being here on time. All right. Our next agenda item is Item 8B. It is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing, and it is a request. I'm going to read the item and then I'm going to ask for disclosures. But this is a request for a development permit and a conditional use permit, also a discretionary sign permit and a tentative tract map that will allow the construction of a new industrial complex with 11 buildings on a vacant lot or land in conjunction with the master sign program, as well as a condominium subdivision for the individual ownerships of these commercial suites, not residential condos. And it's also going, we also are considering the staff recommendation that this is a, that the SEQA is not what the staff is recommending on the SEQA. So before we start, this is at what people used to think of as the old Amazon site, and this is far from what the Amazon site is. It's not, it's, well, the staff will explain the 11 buildings. There's a site plan to the right. This is, the development includes one building that will be utilized for commercial recreation. There's more detail I can give regarding that use. As we go through the presentation, the project will include 487 parking spaces to support the development. Drought-tolerant landscaping is proposed. There is an amenity hub at the center of the site. We see here how the development essentially is split up in two. We have the left portion and then the right portion. So in that center portion where you see the open space is where the amenity hub will be located. There's a pedestrian pathway being proposed as well, commercial signage under the master sign program, and again, the commercial recreation use. And as part of this proposal, the applicant is also requesting a land and condominium Required permits, we have four permits that are required for this development. The first one is a development permit for the, for new non-residential development. We have a conditional use permit for the commercial recreation use, a discretionary sign permit for the master sign program, and a tentative tract map for the land and condominium subdivisions. And Page 1 and Page 2 of the staff report outlines the required findings that the commission has to make tonight. As far as the project's location, it is within the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. We have currently a placeholder address of 1,000 Caya Cordillera. It is within the business park zone within the specific plan. We see it here highlighted in red. It's approximately 20 acres in size. And for context, the yellow line is Avenue de Pico and the orange line represents Avenue de La Pata. And the blue line is Interstate 5. And here's a closer view of the property and business park. We see the vacant lot at the bottom. We see how there's currently two streets that lead to it, one from the west side and one from the east side. Caya Cordillera is on the left and then Caya Sombra is on the right. Throughout the review of this project, we did review or assess view impacts from these locations identified on the screen. There's a total of four. We have the closest one being the Nob Hill, which is along the ridge trail, yeah, the ridgeline trail, to the left of the property. And we have the Veracruz. I don't know if you can see my laser. No, you can't. So we have views, can we, can I use your mouse, Tamara? Thank you. Okay, so this is, this here is the Nob Hill viewpoint I was talking about. This is another viewpoint from a residential neighborhood to the east. This is a viewpoint from Veracruz. And then this view here is from up on La Pata. So here's the project site. Again, it's shown here as vacant. And to the right on that yellow line is representing the ridgeline trail that sits to the south of the project site. So going into the land use, big picture, it is an industrial complex that will hold or support the uses on the table. So we have a mix of professional medical office, warehouse, and light manufacturing that are permitted by right within the specific plan. And then we have the commercial recreation use that is permitted with a conditional So as mentioned, the commercial recreation use will occur within one building. There is a condition of approval that requires that the commercial recreation use be limited to Building 1. That's the building that's highlighted or outlined in yellow on the screen here. And the thought here is to keep the building closer to the street without, to prevent any impacts within the site when it comes to vehicle or pedestrian circulation. So there is a condition of approval that, and some language in the staff report that clarifies that the commercial recreation use must be consistent with the definition of commercial recreation within the specific plan. And the definition states that the primary intent is to provide amusement, pleasure, or sport, and it lists typical uses such as dance, golf, health, and athletic clubs, and youth clubs. The applicant also understands that this does not include a school or daycare. They could come back in the future and propose such uses, such as a school or daycare, but it would require another conditional use permit to be reviewed. So some conditions of approval to address potential concerns from a use like commercial recreation have been included, and those are related to bicycle parking within the site, again, limiting the use within Building 1 only. The parking supply allotted for Building 1 is 76. There's a condition that requires the applicant to remain below the supply of 76 parking spaces for the commercial recreation building. There's also a condition of approval that does not allow a drop-off or pickup zone. Again, this could be something that is considered by the city in the future, but it would require another conditional use permit to review that component. There's another condition of approval that requires that the customers park and walk to avoid any queuing conflicts within the site. And lastly, a condition that requires a 10-minute gap between classes that may be provided, again, within Building 1 for commercial recreation. In addition to conditions, because the project, the development will have more than 100 employees per a calculation that the code requires the city to use, the project is subject to trip reduction and travel demand management standards that relate to bicycle parking, showers, commuter information to be provided within the site, which basically informs the employees there of transit options that they can take, alternative transportation options. There's also requirements for van pool and carpool parking spaces. And within the code, we can go more in detail after if necessary, but the code allows two options when it comes to meeting the travel demand management standards. There's Option A, which basically is pretty specific on what the applicant needs to provide. As of now, the resolution reflects Option A with conditions of approval that touch on the bicycle parking, showers, the commuter information, the van pool and carpool parking spaces. The applicant would like to propose Option B, and they'll explain more about that. Option B basically gives the approval body the freedom or flexibility to choose the amount of van pool, carpool, parking spaces, as well as showers and bicycle parking. Again, and it differs to Option A because Option A is pretty specific with these standards. So moving on to the site plan, another refresher on what the site looks like. So as mentioned, you can see the development being broken up in two. We have a lower campus to the west and then an upper campus to the east. The upper campus sits at a higher grade than the lower campus. And we also do have a private street that the applicant is naming Villa Verona that's highlighted in blue here. So it wraps around the side and the northern property line and back to Caya Cordillera or Sombra. In the middle, where the star is, is the amenity hub that I mentioned earlier. This is provided here. The intent with that is that this is provided for the employees of the development to use as like social or meetings with customers, along with the shower and gym amenities as There's, the pedestrian pathway that's being proposed is highlighted here in the green line at the bottom, the southern portion of the lot, right here. So the intent here is to provide access to the ridgeline trail that sits to the south of the project. So the staff is supportive of this element of the project. We also have trash enclosures that are being proposed. There, in some cases, there's one trash enclosure that will serve two buildings, so you won't see every building having one trash enclosure, since again, one may be serving two. There are existing easements. Some will be quick claimed or partially quick claimed. However, the easements necessary to provide public access or public utility access are still being provided. We can go more in detail later in the presentation as well. There's also lighting proposed in the site that is consistent with the dark sky standards. They'll be directed downward, and there is a condition of approval that requires that the applicant provide a photometric plan during the building permit process to confirm that there's no light spillage outside the property. As far as how the project meets development standards, the max FAR within the business park zone is .5. They are proposing .27, so they are in compliance with the FAR. The required parking is 487. And so they are meeting that as well. They're providing parking spaces within the site. The minimum setbacks from either side of the, from the street ranges from 15 to 20 feet, and they provide a significant amount of setbacks all around. Moving on to the tentative tract map. So as mentioned, the tentative tract map is for two reasons. One, for the land subdivision, which essentially would create one parcel per building. My understanding from the applicant is that they would be pursuing this first to make, give the owner the opportunity to sell the buildings individually. And then they're also proposing a condominium subdivision to have the option to have individual ownership of each suite down the road without having to come back and request that. Again, as mentioned, the easements will be, will remain for public access and public utility purposes, and some again will be quick claimed or partially quick claimed. And that's due to the redirection of some water lines. Going back to the land subdivision, the minimum lot area per parcel does meet the, or will be more than 10,000 square feet. So they're in compliance with the minimum lot area. And again, the, the project will maintain the easement, so there's no conflict with the easements. Architecture and landscaping. So this project, because it requires a development permit, did go through a design review with the design review subcommittee. Some of the comments received from the committee were to improve landscaping to better integrate with the architecture and signage, to comply with hillside development policies by doing just that, improving the landscaping, using mat or flat finishes on signage, and then providing updated visuals for the planning commission staff report. So the applicant did respond to those comments, and those are provided in Attachment 8. And they did address each one. You'll see an updated landscape plan within the architectural plans on the last attachment. In updating the landscaping, staff determined that they do comply or are consistent with hillside development policies. They will show some renderings shortly. The master sign program is consistent with the changes that the DRC asked for. And then that, they also provided the updated visuals, which we'll show. So here's a glimpse on the proposed architecture. It is contemporary. The max height that's allowed is, well, it's limited to 35 feet. And the highest point for the development is at 35 feet. And it's only because some, some buildings have a wing wall, as you see here on the left picture, that extends beyond the rest of the building height. So most of the buildings are below like 30 feet in height, and the, and the height beyond 30 feet would be because of that, that wall, the parapet wall. Landscaping in this zone, they must provide a minimum of 15%. They're providing 31%, so they're in compliance with that as well. And here's a view of the space in between the two campuses. From here, you'll see a path that leads to a ramp and stairs down to the, on the south side of the project. And so you have an idea of the, the plan palette here that's proposed. So here's, here's one updated photo simulation showing the development in the far rear side here with existing development in front. So we see how exists, existing buildings are not fully screened by the trees. And so the development is consistent with that. We, we see some trees covering more of the east side from this view. And then we have one more updated rendering or photo simulation from Nob Hill. This is a ridgeline trail. That's to the south of the project. Here we see the, the development with trees. You might have noticed in the staff report, I mentioned the possibility of the applicant planting additional trees on this hill that we see. They're not required to, but we did ask the applicant to explore that option as they would screen the development more. We're not depending on them planting trees there to make the findings and support the project. But they did reach out to the association that owns that hill. We have yet to get confirmation that they support that. But it is something that they're open to. So moving on to the master sign program. The master sign program includes a monument sign. This is a monument sign that's at the corner of Cordillera and I think it's a monaster. The blue star represents the location of this monument sign shown here on the screen. Materials would be aluminum, concrete. They're also proposing what they're describing as entry portals at each entry site. The red stars on the left site plan represent the, the location of these entry portals. We see, there's also some landscaping. This is part of the updated visual that was not available at DRC, but the applicant did a significant change to include the landscaping and show how it complements the signage. Within the master sign program, we'll have elevations that give, that would give essentially staff and future tenants some guidance on the size and location of the proposed signs that would come from, from new tenants as they occupy the spaces. They are in compliance with the maximum sign area per, per site with... With staff's recommended condition that the planning commission add a condition to limit sign area to 64 square feet per sign and business, they would also be in compliance. At the moment, there's language in the master sign program that would allow 74 square feet per, for the corner units. At the moment, staff is not supportive of that, hence the condition that's being recommended to ensure that they remain in compliance with, with code. Some custom conditions that I want to note here, they're noteworthy. Condition 4.1 ensures that the project is consistent with the trip reduction and travel demand management standards. 5.7 requires that the applicant submit an updated master sign program prior to approval of an individual sign. This is to avoid having individual signs that are not consistent with what was approved, or could be approved under the master sign program. And then 7.8 requires that the property manager maintain an updated parking table as the suites are occupied to ensure that the development as a, as a whole is remaining in compliance with parking. I did pass out in the errata sheet that calls out two, two corrections, one within the staff report. We would like to replace or clarify that the association mentioned on the last paragraph of page seven is incorrect, so currently reads as Rancho San Clemente Business Park Association. It should read as Amonteser Maintenance District HOA. And then on the resolution, we're proposing to remove references to fuel modification zones in condition 2.5, since the project is not within a fuel modification zone. The applicant has requested to modify condition 1.6 to extend the expiration timeframe. It currently reads as three years. Staff is supportive of their request to extend up to four to six years, so the planning commission can decide what within that range is appropriate, but staff is supportive of that, of that request, and that would include all permits, including the tentative track map. As far as the Sequo analysis, staff has determined that no further environmental review under Sequa, per Sequa guidelines, sections 15162 and 15183. And there was some explanation there on, as to the 15162. For 15183, when the, there has been an EIR done for a general plan or development standards or a specific plan, and the project is consistent with those documents, no, no further environmental review would be required unless there's some, like explained before, there's some specific, project specific impacts identified, which have not been made here. So in conclusion, the project is consistent with the general plan, the specific plan, the design guidelines zoning, and the subdivisions code. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project subject to conditions of approval and determine no further environmental review under Sequa, per Sequa guideline section 15162 and 15183. And that concludes my presentation. We do have the applicant's team available, and we also have the owner's representative online via Zoom available as well.
Well, David, you did a great job, and your report covered a lot as well, and we appreciate that. I wanted to just ask my colleagues, should we bring up the applicant for their report, or do we have questions of staff right now?
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Camp.
David, on this handout that you gave us, there's a few items. These are all things that the applicant wants to change on the conditions?
Correct. The first sheet is the errata that I mentioned, and yes, I failed to mention the following sheets behind that errata would be something that the applicant will speak on during their time to present. But yes, those are requested changes to the conditions that are listed on those two sheets.
They're going to mention all these in their?
Correct.
Just to be clear.
Does staff have comment recommendations on, on these?
You have one.
As you kind of mentioned the first, when the staff approves their changes for 1.6, what about all the rest? What's staff's position?
You accepted the first one.
Let me, let me grab a copy, and I can get back to you shortly, but we did review those with the applicant and talk.
That would be helpful. You don't need to do it right now, but if.
Well, I think we need to know.
No, I mean, he does not answer this minute, but Jonathan, I do think we'd like to hear from the staff on each one of these requests from the, from the applicant as to staff's position on, on this before we conclude the public hearing.
Yes, understood, and we'll bring up Zach in conjunction with myself and David to provide that feedback.
So we'll walk through it. We'll give the applicant their opportunity to speak. We'll ask, we'll have staff, give staff some time to get sorted out and then speak to them.
Okay, and then regarding that 64 versus 74 square feet on the individual tenant signs, you're basically, staff is, is rejecting that request, is that what you're saying? And so that condition remains?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but they'll also address that with their presentation, I assume? Whether they agree?
They will address it, is my understanding, and to clarify, the condition I mentioned would be, it's a, it's a recommendation that planning commission include it within the, the reso, the resolution. It's not, that condition is not at the moment, no.
Okay, that's all I know.
Anybody else? Quick questions before we?
One quick question.
Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
David, could, could you go to the condominium subdivision and the individual ownership of each suite? Would each of those, if, if that was decided, would they be subject to the CCNRs as written?
Correct.
All right, is, here from the applicant now. So the applicant has 10 minutes, and is, is it Mr. Johnson that's representing the applicant tonight? I don't see Mr. Lutske here, who was that, the design review. So is it Rob Johnson, or is it someone else? That's not the speaker card I have.
I'm on the speaker card, Rob.
Are you representing, are you representing anybody, or are you a public comment?
Public comment, but I, I do.
I'm going to call, if you're just a public comment, I will call on you after the applicant, as there are 10 minutes. Who's representing the applicant?
Rick Lutske, he's on the Zoom call.
That's why I don't see many audience. He's on.
He's on Zoom.
He's on Zoom. Okay. Mr. Lutske, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for accommodating me. I apologize, I can't be there for health reasons, but wanted to make a quick presentation, and we have our architect here today also, who will add a few, a few comments. Primarily, what I wanted to state is that this site, as everybody knows, has been sitting vacant for many years. The site was purchased 30 years ago by an individual, Fasham Major. He wanted to use it for his company. His company outgrew the site, and so he's had it all these years. He has entertained proposals from third-party developers over the course of this time. No developer has been able to bring forth a proposal that's consistent with the guidelines of the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. This is largely because the type of product contemplated by the specific plan has gotten too expensive over the years. And if you think about it, there's nothing been built of this product type for 20 to 25 years, not just in San Clemente, but in any city in, in, in the Orange County area. What is now, where we sit now is, Mr. Major is in a position where he wants to do, to develop this property himself. He's decided he wants to create a legacy asset for his family, and even, and, and he's prepared to do that, consistent with the guidelines of the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. Even with his low basis in the property, his returns initially for developing this project are going to be in the single digits. What makes this project work is that he has a timeframe here of holding this property to 50 to 100 years, and when you have that kind of a timeframe, the returns increase over time and thus make this a viable project. The bottom line is, we have a very unique opportunity in front of us here today. This is something that couldn't be done by a traditional market-driven commercial developer. Another point I want to mention is, Mr. Major, by education, is an architect, and it was very important to him that the design be very detailed and thought through. His vision for the project is we create art from architecture, and our design team will, will speak to that in a minute. We see this project is bringing a lot of potential benefits to the community. First, we are maintaining the tie-in to the public trail system, but the, also, we're developing a very high-quality industrial project, something above and beyond what would be seen in comparable-type projects, and we're bringing 74 new business suites to the city, which each one of those is a new business opportunity to come to the city of San Clemente. We're providing amenities for this project that are more consistent with an office project than an industrial project, and that's going to help us to maintain tenants and allow tenants to grow. The other thing this does is it kind of raises the bar for all the competition out there. To stay competitive, they're going to need to invest in their projects, and that is just good for the city, good for the, good for the community. So with that, I want to turn it over to our architect to say a couple of brief words. There are some conditions I would like to discuss, and we can go through those at the appropriate time.
Just want to point out, there is a timer running. Do you see that there? Great, awesome, thank you.
So we have some slides we'd like to run through. Appreciate the support. My name is Paul Allen. I'm a member of the design team.
Just a sec, we'll need a minute to load your slides.
Yes.
Sorry. Restart his clock.
Yeah, I'll kind of let him go a little over.
Great, we can go to the first slide, and you can just go to the next one. If it's possible, yes, please.
Camera, can you check and see if this mic's on? Is the mic on there? Can you maybe pull the microphone closer to you?
Yeah. Can you all hear me? Yeah, great. Okay, let me see if I can operate this thing. Okay, so it's a brief presentation. We just have 10 slides, several of which you've, I think you've already seen, which Dave has gone into some detail, but we want to highlight some of the merits of our project in terms of the approach to design. The first thing is that we've taken a very careful and, I think, considerate look at the region of San Clemente and appreciated some of the most distinct qualities, most significantly perhaps represented by the coastline, but also the hillside, the natural region, the way that urban developments have actually been incorporated within the natural landscape. So this, this is very inspiring for the design team, and you'll see that it's informed our approach to the design, not only in terms of, I think, orientation and sensitivity to building massing, but also in terms of the approach to the facade designs. So moving on, this slide is kind of significant, and for those of you who are not familiar or need some orientation in terms of the overall scope for our site, it's delineated by this red dash line, and we can see from this diagram that there are highlighted uses surrounding the site, predominantly industrial to the east side, a kind of a wrap of industrial developments, and then residential on the northwest and the southeast. So it's almost clearly delineated by these particulars, use of zones. Moving on from that, another particular thing, and I would say a distinct characteristic of this site is the topography. We are actually on a sort of a mid-level relative to the high ground, which you see highlighted by the green there. We have topography and grading which extends from 610 feet, and then works its day, its way down towards the northwest direction in the region of about 400, 450 feet, and then continues to descend as we go towards the northwest direction. That means that we have considerable exposure across this kind of northern side of the site, and that's been an important consideration for our team. And then complimentary to that, one of the most important references, I think, that should be highlighted and emphasized, is the prevalence of natural woodlands around the south side of the site, and that really covers the hillside. So this diagram really illustrates how we've worked collaboratively with our landscape architect to incorporate landscaping extensively across and through and permeate the actual development site. As you can see, all of these green arrows here are indicative of a sort of infiltration of landscaping, and I believe Dave has commented also on that. That's an extremely important aspect of this development, I think, and one which, to Rick's point, merits the degree of design and consideration and detail in that has gone into this development beyond what would normally take place for such a construction. And I believe that you've already seen this image, but I wanted to highlight this as a sort of illustration of the results of that effort towards landscaping, and as you can see, this array of trees which conceals to some degree our building. And in addition to that, the rendering of our building and the facade has been carefully considered in terms of tones and colors which are sympathetic, let's say, to the region of San Clemente. This is another closer view, and this, exactly which Dave has previously presented, but again, relevant because we're starting to get closer to the site, and you can see the degree of landscape that's been invested into this development, which I, I would say is one of the distinctions of the overall site. In terms of materiality and colors and composition of the building facade physically, in terms of its type of materiality, the colors that we use, we've drawn reference, again, to the coastline and to the hillside and the local regional, the natural flora that occurs around San Clemente, and found that there were some colors which resonated with us. From that, we've deduced a kind of a simple palette of colors which actually function in the sense of accents, I would say, across the development, and this slide really gives you an indication of what partial elevation sections might look like. As you can see, this is quite intricately designed, and to give you a kind of an overview of the, the basis for this design, first and foremost, we were inspired by the Fibonacci sequence, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. It's a mathematical geometric system which is found prevalent across all, in all scales and all forms of nature, and we found this to be extremely inspiring as an ordering principle for how we think about the building facade in terms of its decorative features. What you see here are four types, each of them distinguished by an accent color. The four types represent four designs, distinct designs. We have 11 buildings across the site, and we've attempted to apply these four, one of these four designs to each of the buildings, so that we introduce variety across the overall campus. And I think that that's one of the important things to keep in mind, that the building isn't a repetitive system of, of uniform buildings, but it has some variance, and that brings a richness with it. And I'll close with these images here, which kind of give you an idea of the quality of the facade. This is a corner view on the left-hand side of the amenity, and then on the right-hand side of a typical elevation. I think I'm down to eight seconds now, but that, this is actually the final slide within the presentation. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That is the 10 minutes for the applicant. Rick, are you, has that conclude your presentation? Can he hear me? Is he, yeah, is he still there? Well, I just want, yes, he's the, he's representing the applicant. I'd like to speak with him.
Can you hear me?
Yes, does, your time's expired. Your time's expired, but kind of had some time to get some slides up. If you need another minute, I can give you a minute to kind of put a button on it, or are you done?
We're finished with our formal presentation. There are, in reviewing the conditions of approval, there were a couple of conditions that we would like to ask the commission to consider amending. And I provided those to staff, the specific conditions, along with an explanation as to why we were requesting those changes. I think there's only, there's a handful of them, maybe five or six of them, but I was hoping that we might be able to review those briefly and to see if they are acceptable to the commission.
Yeah, that would have been ideal during your ten minutes, but so hang on there for a second. Yeah, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to have him give you his pitch?
I think we need to.
Yeah, okay. Rick, can you just be as concise as you can and give us your reason for these? Just go through them as concisely as you can, please?
Yes, do you have the printout?
We have it in front of us. So go right ahead.
Okay. Condition one point six already has been addressed by David. We're asking for an extension of the time period of three years. We're requesting it for six years. Mainly, this is to account for any uncertainty in the market that could cause us to need to extend the development period. Condition two point five E is a condition that any change to our CCNRs requires us to go to get city approval. Most of the CCNRs is innocuous language that could need to be modified for operational reasons. Our request is, is that we work with staff to identify the portions of the CCNRs that the city would like approval rights over, and we limit the approval to just those sections. Condition three point one four is what I believe is an unintended, there's a blanket, three point one four says that we cannot plant any trees in a city easement. There is a blanket easement that city is requiring so that the city can access the underground utilities. As currently written, this condition prohibits us from planting trees anywhere in the common areas. Literally, those renderings that we showed you, this condition as currently written prevents us from doing that. So we're just saying we want to carve out the blanket easement from that condition. Condition four point ten is specific to that traffic demand management program. We're proposing that we use option B instead of option A under that program. Option B has four points to it. One is regarding carpool and vanpool spaces. We're proposing to provide twenty-six total carpool-vanpool spaces, two per building, plus four more vanpool spaces for our larger buildings. Item B is that we provide secure and convenient bicycle storage. We're providing that we provide that storage consistent with the California Green Building Code, which will give us twenty-two short-term bicycle parking and twenty-two long-term bicycle parking. Item C gives the approving body the right to approve showers, which could be separate showers for each sex. We are proposing to provide a single all-gender shower within our amenity hub, which is also adjacent to a small gym that we would be providing for the tenants. And item D is that we would provide a transformation information center at a central location, which would be in our amenity hub. Lastly, seven point three, currently, there's a condition that says for the commercial recreation uses, all doors and windows have to be closed at all times during business operating hours. What I've found from experience with these uses, they're like martial arts studios, dance studios, gymnastics. The operators like the back door, the warehouse-side doors, to be open to get air circulation into the space while mainly youths are performing all their activities in there. It just gets too hot if you have to have the doors closed all the time. And that's, those are the items that we'd like consideration.
Okay, thanks for doing that, Rick. I want you to know that what we're going to do next is we're going to take a public comment, and then I want you to be available for questions. Is that all right with you?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, so at this point, we are going to call on the audience. I've got one speaker card, but there's several people in the audience. So if anyone wants to speak on this item, let me know, so I can call on you, because I just have one, which is Rob Johnston. So Rob, come on up. You'll have three minutes to make your public comment. Welcome to you, sir.
Yeah, welcome to you. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Rob Johnston. I'm president of Johnston Pacific Commercial Real Estate. For the past thirty-four years, we've assisted business owners in the Rancho San Clemente and Talega Business Parks locate facilities that will help their businesses grow and thrive. I'm honored to share that Johnston Pacific has been selected as the exclusive marketing team for the new Luminary Business Park. Our responsibility will be to attract and support approximately seventy-four businesses, some relocating to San Clemente and others already a part of the nearly six-hundred companies that occupy space in Talega or the Rancho San Clemente Business Park. Luminary represents a one, a generational opportunity to move into a truly state-of-the-art facility, one unlike Orange County has seen for the past twenty-five years. As Rick had mentioned, this is the first project of its type in twenty-five years, and it'll be housed here in our wonderful city of San Clemente. It's also important to recognize that City of San Clemente is truly a local community. Approximately eighty-five percent of those six-hundred business owners reside in the city. They are neighbors, are friends, and a backbone of our community. In a product-starved market with only a two-to-three percent vacancy rate, Luminary will ensure that they will continue to have a place to build their businesses. As an example, we're going to be offering two-thousand-square-foot units for small business owners, and those business owners are moving out of a home to start a business, and also up to twenty-thousand square feet to allow for the existing businesses to grow and not have to move out of our submarket and our community. Once complete, Luminary Business Park will stand as the most advanced amenity-rich business park in all of Orange County, and it'll be an exciting milestone for our business community and our citizens of our Spanish village by the sea. Personally, what I'm most excited about is that Luminary will feature an onsite amenity center, the likes of which has never been seen in San Clemente. Some of the amenities in that center include kitchen pantry with lounge areas and TVs, shared conference rooms, gym and shower facilities, golf simulator, and outdoor seating area for the tenants with stunning ocean views. Property features, and it'll set a new standard as well, will be increased warehouse sites for cubic storage, expanded electrical capacity for each unit, floor-to-ceiling glass windows, spacious roll-up doors, easy truck access, and modern high-facility finishes featuring wet bars in every single unit, energy-efficient lighting and efficient bathroom fixtures, EV charging stations, and aesthetically pleasing exterior design and eco-friendly landscaping. We're stoked about this project and what it means for the city of San Clemente, both as a business hub and as a community. And I thank you for your time, and I'm welcome to answer any questions you may have of us.
All right, thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to make a public comment? Anyone else? Okay. There is a three-minute opportunity for the applicant to respond to the public comment. Rick, did you have a response to that, or did you want to just wait for questions from us?
We'll just take questions from you. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. All right, let me, I'd like to keep the public hearing open so that we could hear maybe from the staff next on these conditions, and then we can see if we have any final wrap-up questions. Does that sound fair to everybody? Okay, Jonathan, did you want to take the lead on that?
Sure, I will. And then I'm going to save three point one four for last. That was the condition about the tree planting location, and I'll defer on, defer that to Zach Ponson to respond to this three point one four. For the others, one point six has already been addressed. Staff is supportive of that. We don't see a change in scenario where there would be new standards or policies that we're seeking to implement that would affect this project, so I don't have, take issue with the extension. Similarly, two point five, I'm supportive of the direction to refine which portions of the CCNRs need updating, and we would be happy to work with the applicant prior to this going to the council hearing on that. So we may want to retain some rights, but I would concur that we don't necessarily need to opine on every element within the CCNRs. I'm going to skip three point one four, as I mentioned. Four point one oh, I generally concur. The one exception I have to make, which is really just for consistency with code, is sub-point D. And the request is to utilize the alternative A option for that standard. Unfortunately, the code just says either A or B shall be applied. So I think we need to be consistent in applying B. I think we can work with them on some of the language. I think that we could still meet the spirit of that by having a more simple posting at those three buildings and still having a primary consolidated information hub that accomplishes that. And then finally, on seven point three, it's fairly standard to have a condition related to doors being closed whenever there's live entertainment, and I think that was the goal here. And so potentially, we can address that by simply being more precise in the language to say that if those commercial recreation uses are utilizing amplified entertainment indoors, then that the door needs to be closed, and otherwise it could be open for the benefit of air circulation, things of that sort. So that would be my recommended landing place on seven point three, and that's it for planning items.
So Jonathan, just before we wrap you up, on the four point ten, only B, only B?
Correct.
Okay. And then I assume that for three point one four, you're calling on Zach Ponson, our assistant city engineer?
I am, yes.
Zach?
So three point four does have a phrase in there. It comes from our standard conditions of approval, but to take it literally, it does say any easements on the common area. That's not really the intention of the interpretation of it. So we have no problem revising this condition to eliminate that clause that it prohibits trees in the common area. So I'd recommend, prior to council, we slightly revise that condition.
What do you want us to do tonight?
Unless the applicant has proposed language on it, I didn't think we were going to go through each condition and write exact language of each condition.
So what?
My understanding is we were going to acknowledge, we spoke with the applicant yesterday, and we were going to acknowledge that some of these could be slightly tweaked prior to city council.
Okay.
With the understanding that the common area obviously can have trees.
Is this whole package going to council? Okay, all right. Because typically, we are the final on development permits and CUPs. I understand council does the tentative track maps. So you're just going to bring it to them as a package, the whole thing?
That's correct.
Okay, so in essence, tonight, our action will be recommendations?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's helpful to have that context. Very good, thanks, Zach.
And if you needed to get specific with it tonight, we can remove that clause for common areas prohibiting trees.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, let me just see. I don't want to close the public hearing until we've really had a good discussion and everybody's had an opportunity to ask their questions of staff. So Karen, can I start with you to see if you have any? I don't want to open discussion. Any questions for staff as a result of the conversation with the applicant and these conditions? Or on the staff report?
Just some clarity, that's all.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So what I'm hearing is that we, staff says that we can just simply acknowledge that this language here needs to be cleaned up. I said cleaned up, you didn't say cleaned up. And that we are just taking this as a recommendation. So all of these points on these sheets that were given to us, we can simply just include them as staff will handle this, and we will acknowledge that they will go point by point. I just want to make sure that we are comfortable with that, and if that's the direction that we're taking collectively. I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that we, as a whole, will agree with that.
Did you have some questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable, because we usually see what staff recommends, not, this would mean that we'll be actually blind to it. We would have to go to the city council meeting to see what we approved. So I'm more of the idea that we would continue it and see what the actual language is, because how can I recommend to the council when I don't know what it is as a planning commissioner? I'm letting you be my planning commissioner.
Okay, well, we could say that for our discussion, but did you have any questions for the staff at this point?
That was it. That's my feeling towards staff, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, because technically, the public comment should already be closed before we have our comments.
No, I'm asking if you have questions. Questions?
No.
Okay. Steve, questions?
Only one. It's probably clear to everyone else, but I think, David, you referred to when you were talking about the CUP for this Flex Building One, park and walk. So does that mean, you know, if you're, obviously, you're going to have tenants, and then you're going to have the public coming and using those facilities, does that mean they have to park on the, what is it, the northeast side of the property and walk over there? Or what are you referring to?
Yeah, that's a condition we've added in the past when there's no drop-off or pickup zone that's been provided or just simply not being supported by staff, to not have, again, the queuing on the drive aisle from parents dropping off kids. So instead of them, they may, we acknowledge that they may be doing that, but as far as the business owners, we are requiring that they communicate that, right? That they communicate that to the customers to park and then have their kids or themselves walk to the site and not drop off on the drive aisle. There's no specific parking space or area that we are identifying that they need to use. I think naturally, they'll park near the building.
As close as they can.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's all shared parking?
Correct.
Between all the buildings?
Correct.
Including that Building One. But that building requires more parking, right? Okay, I mean, I guess that's clear. So instead of dropping your kid off, you got to park and bring them over there, actually walk them over there.
Correct.
How do you enforce that? I guess you just, just honor system. I mean, I, you know.
Could be a question for the applicant as well on that, how they envision that.
How's that work? I mean, you know, if Dad's dropping off, you know, he's probably going to slow down to about twenty. No, I'm kidding, of course, but is there any further on that, how that actually works?
I mean, in the past, we, it's possible that there's probably a code complaint, right? Because the intent of this code is to alleviate or facilitate the circulation from vehicles and pedestrians on-site. So if that's not happening, it's, it can be brought up as a code complaint, and then staff, along with code enforcement, will do some inspections throughout a span of a few weeks and address it with the applicant. We've done that recently with the specific project that was not, per the applicant, the public's perception, not in compliance with that, and we went through that process of going through inspections and addressing that directly with the operator.
Chime in on where you're trying to go with this. Okay, so I think we actually touched on this in design review.
We did.
And I think the conversation was along the lines of, and Rick, you can check me on this, I invite you to chime in on this. We discussed that, whether it's the CCNRs or it's the onsite manager, is going to make sure that the tenant understands that there's no drop-off. It's park, let, do whatever dropping off you have to do, and then un-park. It's not pull up, drop off. It's a park and drop off. It's, that's, I think what we agreed would be something that they would enforce. Is that correct?
That is, if you can hear me, that is correct. Most of these businesses are anticipated to be for youth, and the businesses require that the parents... that the parent sign the child in and sign the child out for security reasons.
That was it, yes. The parent had to go inside, and that would require them to park so we don't get this circulation issue. Did you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, Scott, did you have questions?
Thank you. I heard a statement that said that other business parks or industrial parks don't have the amenities that this one is proposing, gym, food, and showers, et cetera. I heard somebody say that, the person who spoke earlier, that this is kind of a new concept. Is this concept something that staff required of the applicant? Or did the applicant bring this as part of their application?
Staff did not require the amenity hub. It came from the applicant.
Okay, thank you. I assume that our zoning code doesn't allow people to reside in these types of, and how do we enforce that? I'm just, it's a general statement. I understand I'm sticking my toe in uncharted water, perhaps, but there are other cities that have a real problem with people moving into these types of spaces and living there. I'm just curious if it's something that we regulate? Is it a part, can we add a condition that expressly forbids this?
Yeah, the typical process for management is frankly, that most property owners are very concerned about that as well. And so there's a posting process that we assist property owners with so that the local sheriffs are able to deal with people who are on private property without permission, especially in those types of scenarios, like longer-term and unwanted and don't have business at that private property. So specific posting has to be made on that site so that the sheriff can go onto the property without the property owner being present. So then a property manager can still contact and have someone arrive to deal with those trespass challenges.
Actually, I don't mean to interrupt, Jonathan. I'm talking about the owner of the piece of property, living in it.
Understood. So generally, through, yeah, through our zoning, we wouldn't allow residential uses in most cases. There are some limited cases where that does occur. So the city will, in some cases, through the zoning code, specify when a manager's unit is permitted. That's not something that's requested or allowed in this situation. So if the city became aware of that, we would deal with that through our code compliance.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Lutske also. I'm curious, I just want to understand what your, and I don't need 15 minutes, but what is the approach here? How are you going to go out into the market? What are you going to offer? Is it going to be, these are for rent, these are for sale, rent-to-own? I'm just curious about the marketing process.
Sure, happy to answer that. So the approach here is a long-term hold. Mr. Major plans to hold this asset in his family, as I mentioned, for 50 to 100 years. So the plan is to rent these units out. The vacancy rate for this type of product is under 3%. So there's tremendous demand for it, but nobody can economically justify building it. So our plan is to lease these out. We'll lease single units. We are creating flexibility that we could lease two units or three units to one company, but the whole idea is to rent these out.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it, that's it.
Okay. Mr. Freeman, any, no questions?
All right, I've got some questions. First, for the applicant, I notice in renderings, the color of the buildings tan. Another color, and other times it's gray, and other times it's light blue. So obviously, reproduction of your renderings can vary with the color of the printer. So my question is, what color are your buildings?
The buildings are all, the primary colors of the buildings are all the same for all 11 buildings. There are two tones, they're both earth tones that are the basic primary colors of 90, 95% of the buildings. Then there are accents at each of the entries that cover, again, roughly 5% of the building's surface that are just accenting the entries. But if there appears to be different colors on the renderings, that is in the reproduction, there are only two colors, and they're all the same on all 11 buildings.
So I know there's accent colors, but the basic color of the building, like without, just the concrete tilt-up wall, what color is it?
It's sea salt.
Where is that? That, okay, so it's like the light grayish, blood-blue, it's blue-gray? Okay. The other question I had is, for the applicant, is there, is there disagreement on the 64 square foot per business limit on the signage? Or are you okay with that? You're going to go with that?
We're okay with that condition, yes.
Okay, great. For staff, do we have anything regulating the hours? Or can these businesses, if they're in light manufacturing, operate 24/7? Or warehousing? Or whatever, commercial business? Can they operate 24/7 by 7 by 365?
They could. The noise, noise is regulated with a time range of when a certain decibel is allowed.
Okay.
I think it's after 10, but as far as operation, there's no.
No limits?
No limits.
Okay. So the governor on that is the noise ordinance? And if there's noise at 4:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the morning, and it's, then it goes to code compliance to?
Correct.
Pursue that?
Yep.
Got it, okay. Just put that out for everybody to think about. The other thing in the design review, we talked a lot about their signs being oversized and maybe trimming those down. I believe in the staff report, David, you said they complied, they brought all the signs back into compliance, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
They, we looked at that, too. They did.
They did, okay.
That was part of that landscape.
Review, perfect. The other thing is the EIR, the sequoia determination that we'll be forwarding to the council, is based on an EIR that was done in 1983 for the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. And I want to make sure that from this, you do a pretty good job, I think, of going through the findings that we need to make, that nothing's really significantly changed. But I just want to, for the record in particular, I think, just highlight that. I think it's important. One of the areas that I noticed in here is the, and maybe you can just speak to this about the regional circulation financing phase program? Is this project contributing to that? Or how are they mitigating for the traffic? Is that you, Zach?
I'll answer that first. Zach?
So all business parks, each area of the city kind of has a different zone, especially east of the, or east of the 5 freeway.
Yep.
This particular zone is subject to the RCFPP impact fee for traffic.
Yep.
And so if I remember correctly, please don't set it in stone, but I believe it's $1.50 a square foot.
Okay, so that is their mitigation?
So that's their mitigation, and that goes into traffic signals within the area of influence around Rancho San Clemente.
Yeah, because I think in 1983, we were measuring this on level of service, probably, at key intersections, not daily trips, et cetera.
Correct.
So that's why the mitigation is the fund, to go back to the, to fund circulation improvements.
Correct.
Got it. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. And I think, David, then, just for me on the housekeeping, you wanted us to put this limit on the signage, right? The 64 square feet somewhere in the conditions?
Correct, yes.
Would you have a place, do you have a location where that goes? While you're doing that, I'm going to do one final round. Can I close the public hearing? Are we all good with what we need to know? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and now I'm going to, did you find where that goes, David?
No, I need some time.
Go ahead, take your time. Who wants to lead off the discussion?
Well, we should probably, we should probably discuss the resolutions, or not the resolutions, the modifications of?
Yeah.
Conditions, and who should, who should share that up? Where should it land?
Yeah, do you want me just to do, kind of just do, go through?
The only problem I have?
Yep.
Is even the staff's report says, "subject to the attached conditions of approval." If we delegate our authority to staff, then I can't, I can't vote for that because I don't know "subject to the attached." So that's why it has to be continued, no matter how many more questions you ask. I can't, I can't vouch for that statement because I am not making my decisions "subject to the attached conditions of approval."
And I'm just not tracking you, we have the.
I think you can track me because I don't, yeah.
You have those.
You can't delegate to staff to make these appropriate changes because I am supposed to, by state law, say that I am approving it, recommending to the city council, "subject to the attached conditions of approval." So if we want to sit here and wait for city staff to develop these to whatever time it is, we don't have the attached.
Let's just go through them and see if we actually land on them.
It'll take, how long will it take for you to go together?
I'm going, I'm going to share in this discussion, saying, city, this is what city does every day. You know, the city planning does this every day. This is codes and zones, and they match it to what we already have. So it's not like they're developing anything new, they're just matching it with what we already have developed. This is their job to do, and they already said they could do it.
Right, but you won't know what it is tonight.
I think there's only one where that actually is the case. All the rest are.
They said they approved the first.
Right.
All the others, they'd have to discuss with the applicant.
No, I think it's just one where Zach wants the language on the easement. Otherwise, all the rest, I think we can just nail those down tonight.
It was refining the CCNRs, which they just wanted to sit down in doing that.
So they're going to refine the language so we have a finished product, so that we can see that are attached to the resolution?
Can I weigh in on this?
Yeah, this discussion.
We don't, we don't, we don't have the CCNRs right now, and it's not like we're approving the CCNRs. In my opinion, we could, and maybe you can't vote for it, Dr., I could.
Yep.
Vote for a recommendation to say that we, you know, approve the CC, or the conditions of approval as written in the staff report. And we, you know, have staff, in accordance with what's proposed here and subject to our discussion points, that staff pin down revised conditions of approval along these guidelines and, as discussed, prior to city council. City council's the one that's voting on it anyway.
In alignment with codes and standards.
We're making a recommendation to council, and, you know, so long as it's generally down these guidelines, I'm comfortable, I could, I could vote for that.
Is that true? Is city attorney, is that true? It's a subject, I'm making decisions subject to the conditions of approval? So if one of the conditions of approval is that we're delegating it to staff to produce a product that we don't see tonight, that's not attached, that that's okay? I mean, that's legal? That's a procedural yes?
Yeah, I think a lot of times, you give staff direction in that way, but I do think if you have.
We never see the product because the planning commissioner will not see that product.
I do think you just need to make sure that you're giving enough direction to staff so that you're comfortable. But if you're not, you know, if you can't be comfortable with providing that direction, then I understand, I do understand where you're coming from on that point, but I think it's okay to go, to proceed in that manner.
Yeah, I would just say that with what's written here, the intent is clear. I don't think there's any ambiguity on the intent, intent of the modification of these conditions. So as far as the language, it's pretty common, we've done it here quite often, where we let staff work out the detailed language, as long as we're good with the intent. Now, if you're not good with the intent of these changes, I could see why that would be a problem.
Then what is the intent of staff? Like on 4.1, they're going to say, no, they want to go back to A? Then fine, just tell me what staff's intent is on each, because I'm not sure if they're, what are they going to do on the second item?
Well, if you give them direction, I think if you are specific and you want them to focus on B instead of A.
Okay, I mean, if you want to rush it through, that's fine, but I mean, I think my obligation as a commissioner is to see what the, see what they are. But this is a pretty broad delegation of the duty.
Jonathan?
I was just saying, like, I don't like 10 to 8 o'clock at night.
Yeah, let me just clarify, Jonathan.
Those are all good points.
I wasn't, you know, I wasn't sure if we were bifurcating this, you know, just taking the tentative map to the council, and we were doing the development permit, and we were doing the CUP tonight, and we were making the sequel determination tonight. I didn't realize that, in effect, we're really making no decisions tonight. We're not taking any formal action other than passing this along to the city council with our review.
Recommendations.
And recommendations. So that's, Gary, that's where I'm coming from. We're not taking an action, we're not, so to Jonathan, here's my question. We're not, are we actually not really adopting the resolution? Can we maybe clarify on that?
I don't think we should.
If we're not even, what are we doing with the resolution?
Yeah, you still are adopting a resolution, but that just, like, clarifies, you know, that, what your position is on the project.
Okay.
But it's not an approval action. So in this case, it's, you know, almost similar to design review where you're providing your recommendation on the project, but it's not a final action. Your recommendation isn't something that can be appealed because it's not a final action. Council would be taking the final action. And so I think on this topic, you know, one of the options could be, for instance, providing within your recommendation, language that says that you want staff to provide a streamlined version of any conditions that are modified so that there is clarity for council before they take a final action on these final conditions that are being discussed. Things of that sort, we certainly could do if the commission does desire to move forward on the item.
Yeah, and I think maybe it would be helpful to the council, too, if we basically could make the findings so that they could rely on that, and then whatever recommendations we have on top of that. So that would be, my thought would be, just to go through this, does everybody, is everybody comfortable making the required findings, first of all, as part of our discussion? So we've got to make required findings that the development permit and the zoning, that it's consistent with the general plan, complies with zoning regulations and city design guidelines, and is not detrimental to health, safety, and welfare, and is, you know, compatible with properties in the neighborhood. Do we all generally find we can make that finding? Anybody object? Okay. Then on the conditional use permit, we need to make the finding that it is, a proposed use is permitted within the zone, and it is compliant with our zoning code and general plan. The site's suitable for this type and intensity of use as proposed. The proposed use will not be detrimental to health, safety, and welfare, and it is, will not negatively impact surrounding land uses. We all, anyone, we all comfortable making that finding on the conditional use permit? On the discretionary sign, I'm hearing no objections, I'll move on to discretionary sign permit. The zoning ordinance does allow a master sign program. So are we all comfortable making the findings regarding to the signage? That the design, the way they're going to be illuminated, the scale, the size, that they are consistent with the intent of our general plan, sign, design elements, scale, materials, all of that? Are we all comfortable with the signage?
Subject to the 64 feet per tenant.
Yep, agreed. We all agreed on the 64? Great. Then on the tentative track map, the findings that we need to make there is that the site is physically suitable for this type of development and is physically suitable for the developed density, and that there is, if they do these type of improvements, there will be no cause to public health, and that the subdivision and its provisions for design and improvements is consistent with the general plan and the San Clemente specific business park. We all comfortable making that finding on the tentative track? tract map? Everybody? Okay, great. So I think, I think we have a consensus on moving forward this project with respect to, um, these conditions that we have here. It's, it seems to me like, um, the staff is in support of doing these and, uh, when it comes to number 4.10, it's item B, and they are going to, um, this is their intent, is to accept the developers or the applicant's request, but there may be some fine tuning of some of the language before it goes to the council.
Well, they would have to modify it to
So they may have to
Align with the code and zone.
Right. So why don't, so are we comfortable, uh, with the staff taking that step?
I am, and, but I like Jonathan's idea of
With the red line.
Putting the red line, say, hey, these are the conditions that have been modified since the planning commission saw it.
Yep.
So it brings it to their attention.
And I think, my question to my colleagues is, are we comfortable with the intent of these changes that, accepting what the applicant has requested? As staff has reviewed and as we heard from the applicant, accepting these in that direction?
I am, along with the red line.
Patrick, are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable with the changes, I'm not comfortable with the process, so I'm not going to be supporting this.
Because you just said, "as staff has reviewed." They haven't reviewed it yet because I don't have the exact language that they reviewed, the product of their review.
This needs to be continued.
This isn't like our usual thing where we say, yeah, you know, it needs to be, this needs to be adjusted to 65 feet instead of 60 feet. This is giving them the opportunity to write, you know, our responsibility. And if I want to find out about it, I got to go to the council meeting. I've never had a decision like that before, where I didn't know what we were sending to the council within some parameter.
Okay, I guess my, my concern is
If you want to convince us
Yeah.
you have to say at some future date that he will make the product, because we're not making the product or making a recommendation to them right now.
Are you, let me ask conceptually, are you guys comfortable?
I hate to be sticky, but I think
That's okay. I'm just trying to separate process from, are we okay with the action? If we wanted to, if, no, we're not comfortable with the action, that's a problem for me. I need, we need to say to staff, no. If the direction to staff is, yes, we're comfortable, but then, so that means, that's why I want to
I'm saying yes to staff and bring it, but let me see your changes before I recommend to council.
So you're comfortable with the direction, but you're not comfortable, um, leaving it up to them to come up with the final wording?
I'm comfortable with continuing it. Let them do their review. Let me see then, when I make my final decision, if I'm comfortable with those, um, conditions of approval.
I agree.
Because I can't recall whether we've done this before, we've just against staff. I don't have a problem with staff, but I'm giving my total duty to staff knowing what direction they're going.
I think
What his final product is going to be.
All good points, but I think if we give staff direction, which means it must align with zoning and codes and the general plan, then that's their direction.
I don't think so, I think you need to tell them exactly what this red is going to say.
Hey Jonathan, how many of these do we not have wording for? That you couldn't, like, tonight, basically do it? Like number 6.1, we just say, it's going to be six years, right? On 2.5E, um, we're, yes, it, we, we would not have the exact CCNR language that you're going to, but we, we could, I would be comfortable saying that that, that's determined outside of this hearing by staff, that we're comfortable with staff making those determinations, because we've never looked at CCNRs before and I don't think we need to do that. You know, right?
Yeah.
So that's what I'm, um, so on 3.14, uh, Zach, essentially, what, what's your thought there? I mean, it's, it's, you're
I mean, we can rewrite 3.14 right now.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Or you can simply add, unless approved otherwise by the city engineer, then the rest of it goes into the place. And then the city engineer can obviously allow trees in the common area. It was never our intent to prohibit trees in the common area. It was a standard condition that was added to the, the list.
Okay.
We, yeah. We can rewrite it or we can add that clause at the beginning of it that gives the city engineer some power to allow trees on site wherever it is.
Man, I don't think this is that hard.
I think that's the language.
I think that's
Yeah. You got to give them direct direction, not just
Yeah, that's what I'm
Use whatever you want.
That's what, no, that's what we're doing right now.
And, and that's why I agree with that.
Okay.
Tell them that.
Yeah.
But we still haven't told them what to do on the second one.
Uh,
How to modify the CCNRs.
Well, I don't know that that's our job to
Or not modify them, just what the Or just say no, then we know what it's going to be.
Why don't we just, if we, then let's remove it and then
Say no, that they'll, we'll stick with the black instead of the red.
We can just remove it and then, uh, staff can just take it to the council with their, whatever they're doing.
Yeah, we just take out 2.5E.
We'll just take it out.
Okay, I agree with that.
And then we're, so Zach, on 3.14, exactly what do you want to say unless the city engineer, uh, approves?
Unless deemed otherwise by the city engineer, and then the rest of the condition stays the same.
Unless
And that gives the city engineer the
Authority.
The authority to allow what, what's going to be inside the water. It's a, it's a water access easement. We're going to own the water system on the site. We just need to be able to drive over the common drive aisles.
So what we need to do is find 3.4 in the packet. And let's see if we can do that. Yeah, I'm just looking, this, the resolution is so long to get to the actual conditions, it's taking me a minute to do that.
It could just be the applicant who can plant trees wherever it is deemed by the city engineer, something like that. If he wants to plant trees in the, in the easement, he's got to get the city engineer approval of whatever the plan is.
3.1
I'd be fine with that.
Just say, "as deemed by the city engineer."
Yeah. That's good for me.
Actually, in the, uh, this, in my, I don't have a 3.14. Do you have that, Scott? Oh, here it is. Landscape plans shall be approved by the utility department unless approved otherwise by the city engineer.
Let's just strike out, no trees shall be planted within cities and so within 10 feet. Has to be approved by the city engineer.
Okay.
Very done.
I, I don't know, Zach, I'll let you chime in. I don't see that that condition needs to be modified because we already have that language at the beginning that says, "unless approved by the city engineer."
Unless approved otherwise, no trees, yeah, so
I, I actually believe, Rick, maybe you can chime in. I believe you might have referenced 3.14 incorrectly because 3.14 doesn't mention common area at all.
He's on mute, but that's fine.
But I, uh, if you guys can hear me
Yeah, we can hear you.
We need 3.14 alone because it already says, "unless approved otherwise by the city engineer."
We're striking 3.14.
Rick, was there a different condition that mentions the common area?
No, I think we're striking, we don't, Jonathan, you're saying we don't need to make any modifications to it, it's fine the way it is.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to move on from 3.14, we're not making any alterations to it.
So we're crossing out the red.
Crossing out the red on 3.14.
Good.
On 4.10.
Option B.
Option B.
If you wanted B.
And crossing out all, everything else. On, um,
Well, let me, let me clarify. So
Okay.
each of these items are requirements of the code under transportation demand management, um, uh, requirements. And so they were listing out how they're meeting those standards, A, B, C, D, E. My comment was that item D, they referred to a, a list under A. So my recommendation is that those buildings to comply with our code, those buildings still have a posting referring to uh, the, uh, information center, um, would, that will be located at the hub.
And is that, and is that in the COAs? That posting, is that part of, or is that just part of code?
So currently, under the conditions of approval, uh, they're referencing, um, within code section 1776.
Yeah.
There's an alternative A and an alternative B. And the, the current, uh, condition references alternative A. Their justification here is to transition to alternative B. And I support that with that one change, that under D, uh, we do need to still have some form of posting at those three buildings that meet that square footage threshold.
So under D needs to be somehow added?
So I would modify, I, I wouldn't fully accept their proposal that they have under D there. And instead, I would say that we still need to have a posting at the three referenced buildings, referring to the information center that's required under the municipal code 1776.
Can we have Jenna work up a sentence for that? That we can just put that in tonight, right now?
Yeah, we can work on that.
All right, so Jenna, do you mind taking that on? Thank you. Okay, so while she's working on that, 7.3, what we want to do there is, we want to require them to close their doors when there is, uh, use of amplified sound. So, um,
So basically, it was denying the request.
Yeah.
Do we want to put a DB level?
Well, it's in code already, 55, I think is what it
Doors and windows shall remain closed
At all times.
Because they may have directed
Instead of, at all times, just say, um, when amplified sound
Is as in use.
Is in use.
I think that's already
Does that work because if they have a, like a cheer studio?
Sure.
And they're barking out directions? That's, sometimes gets, that's amplified, I mean, they heard that.
Sounds like a, sounds like a code enforcement issue.
You can hear that.
It's, sounds like the same-ish.
So I think it's just, it goes to the decimal
Yeah.
level.
Again, it's code.
And even though, even though it's internal, it still could go to an office across the street that, you know, if they have their door open and the recreation use has theirs open, it can cause a problem over there, maybe they can't hear the phone or
But it's addressed in the code, we have
Right, it's addressed in the code, so I don't
Yeah, we don't
You guys just want to deny it, just keep the doors closed?
No, 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 I, I'm just saying that if you, if you prohibit all amplified sound, then you might be handicapping these businesses.
Oh, preventing, we're just saying if you use it, you got to have your door shut.
You can't open the doors, yeah. You can't have your big garage door open.
You got to have your door shut if you, when you're using amplified sound, period.
Jonathan, you want to, do we, can they just get a conditional use permit if they have amplified sound or what's, how do we address it with the code?
Yeah, our, we have an administrative policy on this topic that acknowledges that a lot of businesses use some form of amplification indoors, and so we don't require a use permit for indoor amplification.
So there's a process for that?
Yes, uh, but for outdoor amplification, uh, a use permit is required. So in this case, the, the use is indoors, so we wouldn't normally require a use permit, um, but we do have a standard condition, uh, that we commonly apply for businesses that are using some form of amplification, um, to require that closure. So the, the mechanism, the reason we're doing this is because it is a use that requires a use permit. So when it requires a use permit, we can, can govern the operations in some form. So we just see that large door could conceivably be open and they could conceivably be playing music that could be bothersome to people. So I, I, that was the intent of the language I proposed was, um, open the door for fresh air, but when you do, then turn off the music.
Mm-hmm. So keep the warehouse doors closed with
Just leave it.
Yeah, abide by the code.
Yeah, well, just leave it. All right.
So we're leaving it, they can't open their doors?
If they have amplified sound.
Well, well, then, when you say leave it, you're saying, are we adding the part about when amplified sound is in use? Or we're just leaving the condition without changing it at all? So they can't open the doors?
It's a good question.
And enjoy the
Right.
Nice ocean breezes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, first of all, we're, it's, it's really two elements. All commercial recreation activities are to occur indoors. Uh, so that's one. I think we're all public
Just read, I mean, read off the
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Show me where it's 7.3?
Yeah.
Okay, all commercial, yeah, activities to occur indoors, we're all good with that, right? And then doors and windows shall remain closed at all times during the operation hours of the commercial recreation use.
Why don't we modify that to say, when amplified sound?
Sure.
So remain closed instead of at all times.
When
When amplified sound is being used.
Yep. Use. Jonathan, is that fine?
Yes.
Preserve what you're trying, what you guys are trying to do? Preserve what you're trying, what you guys are trying to do? Okay. So that'll be a change to 7.3. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all moving to forward together here. Um, so do we have some suggested wording for the D?
4.10D.
Yeah.
I think we'll need a few more minutes.
Okay, fine.
We are working on it, though.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this proposal? We've, we've reviewed the, we've reviewed these, um, modified conditions. Is there any other discussion about the proposal?
I think we're fortunate to have this project at this location. Wouldn't get built other than, as Rick says, this opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
I was concerned when I first looked at it regarding the colors, the colors and the sort of playfulness, it was a little cartoony. But I appreciate the, I guess, description and, of, of the design being tied to the Fibonacci sequence, which is actually a very sophisticated program that they have for design. And so I was convinced that, I think it's actually a good direction, you know, for the design. Um, the colors, you know, we talked about that a little bit, but again, it's 5%, so it's an accent.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think it's going to be a great addition to that, to that area there.
So you're in support of the project?
Yes.
And, um, okay.
I, I lo, I, I think the project's great. I can easily make all the findings, and I'm super excited about all the new business space available for, to, you know, provide opportunity for businesses to come to San Clemente or expand in San Clemente.
I think it's interesting, and we're not just killing time here, that 85% of tenants in the business parks live in San Clemente. Isn't that what he said?
Yeah.
85. Pretty impressive. I guess we know why, you know?
But don't tell anybody. Um, so Jonathan, as far as our actions tonight, you're looking for our recommendation to the city council on the sequel determination, that's one. And then two, you'd like us to adopt our, this resolution that recommends that the city council approve the permit, the CUP, the sign permit, the sign plan, uh, program, and the tentative track map, um, and then, which are subject to the attached conditions, and that, and then we will then make our changes to that.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's the action that we're looking at taking tonight. So let's see if we can summarize, so we're, um, what our attached conditions will entail.
Well, we're just waiting on that one.
Yeah.
No pressure.
And also, David, where we want to insert your 64, did you have that?
Yes, I, to me, it seems appropriate to do it after 5.7, since it's already under a subsection noted as signage.
What that, that would be?
The, okay, I can work on that one. I have not written the language.
Okay.
Uh, okay, 5.8.
How we doing?
I think I'm ready to read into the record, uh, my recommendations on these, uh, conditions, if you're ready.
Ready.
Okay. So, um, my understanding is that the commission, um, would like to recommend approval of the project, but with some modifications to the following conditions. Condition 1.6 to be revised to allow for a timeframe of six years as opposed to three. Condition 4.1, this is going to be the longest one, so just bear with me as I read through. Uh, the initial part of the condition can remain as is, but there are, uh, four subparts, A, B, C, D. So for A, the language can be modified to state applicant shall provide 22 parking spaces designated for carpool vehicles and four spaces designated for vanpool vehicles. B, applicant shall provide bicycle parking consistent with the California Green Building Code, section 51064, which will require approximate, which will require 22 short-term and 22 long-term bicycle parking spaces. Such short-term parking shall be provided as outdoor bike racks with two racks per each of the 11 buildings, and the long-term parking shall be provided as indoor racks with two racks per each building. C, the applicant shall provide one all-gender shower facility. D, a commuter information area shall be provided that offers employees appropriate information on available transportation alternatives to the single occupancy, uh, vehicle. This area shall be centrally located and accessible to all employees or tenants. A notice informing employees of this commuter information center shall be posted in each building that is larger than 25,000 square feet. Uh, next, to augment, condition 5.7, to add to the end of that current condition, the language, which shall include that each tenant shall be limited to 64 square feet of signage, and no individual sign shall exceed 64 square feet. And finally, condition 7.3, uh, all commercial recreation activities are to occur indoors. Doors and windows shall remain closed at all times while indoor amplified mus, sound is occurring during the operating hours of the commercial recreation use.
So everybody, any comments? Good? We're good on these? Gary, good? Okay.
Good.
Ready for motion? Anyone want to do it? I'll do it. All right. So I move, um, that we recommend that the city council determine that this project does not require further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, and per the SEQA guidelines, section 15162 and 15183, and that we adopt PC Resolution 25-012 recommending that the city council approve development permit 25-224, and, uh, conditional use permit 25-223, discretionary sign permit 25-263, and tentative track map 25-225. Luminary Business Park is subject to the following, to the attached conditions of approval as modified by the, um, comments that Jonathan, our city planner, Jonathan Lightfoot, read into the record, as amended by those comments.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimous. See you at the city council. Okay. Let's go on to new business. Uh, did you guys take that already?
Yeah.
Great. So now old business, non-commissioner reports. Any commissioners have a report they'd like to make? Any down there? Okay. Um, any comments on the TFA? Jonathan, any comments on TFA or from the staff?
Uh, only that, just to advise, we are most likely going to be canceling the meeting the week of Labor Day, um, so I anticipate that we will be, uh, adjourning back in the second meeting of September.
Very good. Okay. And did you have any other updates for us from the staff?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I move, we adjourn. Uh, so should, when do you want us to adjourn to, Jonathan? You want to just go to the...
Let's, let's keep it as the, um, September 3rd, we'll send out the cancellation.
Okay. So I will move that we adjourn, um, to the next regular scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission, which is scheduled for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM, and will be held at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers.
All seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Camp. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.